Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Here.
Councilmember Snipper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
I believe that some of you might have heard Councilmember Clay's voice from the back of the room. She wasn't hiding in the back of the room, she's hiding in California and she's joining us over the phone for the first part of the meeting. And then she will rejoin her family claiming the matterhorn.
That's right, matterhorn right after the phone call.
Does any of the council have any comments? Councilmember Robinson.
I hope everyone had a good holiday season, I certainly did. And I just, whoa. I'm trying to look ahead a little bit to January 19th, when it's in Ward 3 reception at 7:00 before this council meeting, and make sure that all of my constituents, all the people in Ward 3 know that they can come and rub elbows with all of us on the council and talk about things of interest. I also wanted to remind City Manager Matthews that I'm hopeful that staff in one level or another, no pressure, will have some sort of focus for Ward 3, so that we can look at what staff offers to my Ward 3 constituents, and then that I think would help the conversation go along. So, that's really all I have.
Any other comments? Councilperson Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everybody had a good holiday, it was nice to be off for the month, but it's enjoyable to be back here on the council. I imagine staff enjoyed us being gone for months too, but we won't ask for comments on that. I just wanted to remind my colleagues that there is an upcoming public hearing on some traffic changes that'll take place on January 12th, I believe 7:00 p.m. at the community center.
7:30.
7:30 p.m. And so I encourage my colleagues to be here for that public hearing, and also make sure that the community members know that talking about traffic restrictions in the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood, which is Hilltop, Mississippi, Parkview, some of those streets that are just outside of Tacoma Park, and also on Ritchie Avenue in Geneva and Oswego. So I encourage community members to come out for the public hearing and let their thoughts be known. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I want to take the opportunity to extend appreciation to the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department. The evening of the big snow before Christmas, that Friday evening, a house fire broke out on Wildwood Drive, two doors away from my home. It was purely an accidental kind of a thing, but it's the kind of a thing that could happen to any of us at any time. And a good bit of damage was done to the house, but it's not terribly serious. Everybody got out except for a couple small little pets, and families doing fine. I want to also acknowledge the fact that through our community listserv in Ward 6, a number of people came forward to provide clothing and cash to the family, two parents and their teenage daughter, to sort of help them bridge the gap until they were able to get out to the store and get some stuff for themselves. And I mentioned the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department because they did what they're supposed to do. And so, I'm not going to call them heroes because that's their job, and they'd say, "No, we're not heroes, we're just doing this because that's what we do every day, it's another day at work." The fact is, is they got there in a very big hurry, they got the fire out very quickly, and really greatly minimized the damage. And it's easy to take that kind of service for granted, but boy, I tell you, it sure makes you glad that they're there. I also want to just extend appreciation to the city's Department of Public Works for what I think probably would be fair to categorize as Herculean efforts contending with the snowstorm. I mean, it was predicted, and by golly, for once, the U.S. Weather Bureau seemed to get it right. And so everybody had the time to plan for it a little bit and get their salt trucks loaded up, but the simple fact is, is that they kept up with it, and it was a challenge because in Tacoma Park, there's no easy place to dump all the excess snow. When you have a snowstorm of three, four, five, six, seven, eight inches, as we often do in the winter, there's plenty of room on the sides of the street, but when it gets to be pushing 20 inches, there isn't room on the sides of the street. And sometimes nicely cleared sidewalks that a dutiful citizen has taken great trouble to clear, they find themselves frustrated because the plows have pushed back the snow. I think there was a great deal of patience experienced by most citizens, but I think we can also say that with snow comes frustration, the two go hand in hand. And I just think the city did a good job, and I appreciate it. That's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Wright.
So I first want to second the snow removal efforts by the city. I think that one of the things we need to realize, I think this was like the sixth or seventh largest storm recorded since 1884, so you're talking about an event that happens once every 20 to 25 years. And we just have to realize that if we wanted to have all the resources ready to be able to deal with that type of storm, the number of trucks to the complete satisfaction, every road would be cleared and everyone would be happy right away, the city budget would be astronomically higher than it is right now. It's like a storm drain, right? You plan for a 10-year, 20-year storm, you have adequate resources to deal with that. And this type of storm is in excess of, I think, what we typically are prepared to deal with in a way that would affect people in any way. And I think the public works staff and people who work in public works who aren't even on the right-of-way crews, you know, did an amazing job in clearing sidewalks and streets, and I commend them. I will say, I don't think all the businesses did a great job in clearing places, and one of the things I noticed some businesses actually did, and I can think of two in particular, one is the apartment building, this isn't a business, but the apartment building at the end of Maple on the right-hand side before you get to Sligo, they plowed their parking lot by plowing a big pile of snow onto the sidewalk. And when I went running the week following Christmas, even with the warmer temperatures, there still was a pile of snow there. And also, at the other end of Maple Avenue, just before you're entering the district, the large tower there, they plowed their driveway by, their parking lot by plowing across Maple Avenue and onto the sidewalk driveway in front of a resident's house. So I think we need to make sure that we notify people who have those properties to plow, there needs to be a proper place to put it, and it's not under the sidewalk. But I think the city overall did a great job. I want to comment on the buses on Maple Avenue. For a number of months now, Metro Bus has been, not Metro Bus, sorry, RideOn has been using the larger bus. And there was a long, before I moved to Tacoma Park, there was a long ago commitment with the community that the smaller buses would be used. I understand that there was a problem with a bunch of the buses and they had to take them out of service, and they're in a little bit of a legal wrangle to get compensated for those buses. I'm sympathetic to that, but when they can't really give us a deadline for when that issue's going to be resolved, I think they have to spend the money or do whatever to get the small buses back now and get compensated later. So Deputy Manager Ludlow's been working on this, but I wonder if we could bump it up a level. And then lastly, it's interesting that Josh is here, Josh from the governor's office. When I was thinking about my comments tonight, I didn't realize he was going to be here, but I do have to comment on Ethan Allen, the state highway that runs through our city, which had a back-and-forth with state highway about who owns and who's responsible for repaving it. And residents don't really care who owns it, and it's so bad now, there's like one of those big orange trash cans right next to a pothole that would really swallow a normal car tire. And the other day, it was actually off, you know, off onto the sidewalk, so I was driving behind people, I knew it was there, so I was kind of prepared, but they're swerving out into oncoming traffic at the last second. So I think we really need to get that addressed, and I'm sure we can talk, you know, Josh, we can talk with Josh later about that, but I know you've been working on that, City Manager, but if there's any updated status on that, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Councilwoman Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. I too thought the snow removal was really quite extraordinary, and I was amazed to see the folks out in the middle of the night plowing as well, up early in the morning. And then the next time trash got picked up, they were out there doing the trash. The second thing I want to comment on is a follow-up on Josh. I too have noticed the potholes in the state highways, there's several on Flower Avenue between Carroll and Piney Branch. That stretch of flower was patched in a number of places, but there are now new potholes there. And I hope we can pursue getting those, because I had already had a constituent get a flat tire on a pothole there. The last thing I want to bring up is foreclosures continue, and particularly concerning, one thing I want to highlight is that when we have foreclosures of rental property, I have quite a few smaller units in my ward, you have the situation in which the renters have been dutifully paying the rent, and all of a sudden, they get a notice saying they have to move out because the property's being foreclosed. They've played by the rules. I do hope the city, we've had some back-and-forths on this, I do hope the city housing department can be a little creative about how to deal with this situation, because there are some additional properties that are either in foreclosure process now or appear to be about to. And I hate to see more tenants evicted, it's quite difficult to find inexpensive housing in the general Montgomery County area. And, you know, the notice is often quite short, so it's difficult to find it. So I hope the city can be a little creative on that issue. Thanks.
And I'll just add on the issue that you were just talking about with foreclosures, as you were talking, that it's doubly hard when that happens at this point in time, because it's hard on the tenants who are losing their place to live through no fault of their own. It also places an even larger burden on the city in this case, because they won't be there when the census comes around in April, and therefore, we won't have as many people counted, and we won't get as much money from various sources of revenue from the state or the federal government, which is based on population. Therefore, we'll have less resources to be able to try and do something about that. So it's a double whammy. I also just wanted to point out, it was interesting that I saw in the Washington Post a couple days ago, it must have been Saturday, because the Arlington County Board always has their first meeting of the year on January 1st, and one of the things that was touted in the article was their establishment of a task force on the environment, and they said that they were the first one in the area to do that, and it was going to be looking at a number of issues, and I thought, Yogi Bear, deja vu all over again. No, we were first, but they're bigger, so I guess they get to claim it. But I felt like we'd been a little prescient in trying to take a wider look at environmental issues in the city and get a wider look at it from residents. I did notice that their timeframe was a bit longer, we asked our folks to come back in a couple of months, and they, I think, laid theirs out for a year and a half or two years, and they have a particular emphasis on not what the government can do, but what the community can do, and I think that was a big part of what we asked of our folks as well. So it'll be interesting to see if there's some possible cross-fertilization with our sister community across the river. And I think that's all we have in the way of council comments. The next item is whether there's any additional agenda items or a scheduling update. We don't have any additional agenda items. Since we're just back from a fairly long break, I want to point out a couple things that are on upcoming agendas this month. Next Monday, the 11th, the Task Force on Environmental Action will be back, will be here to provide an interim update and have a conversation with us about where they're going and anything that they need to get from us. There will also be a short discussion on whether or not to solicit public input about possible requests to the legislature in the 2011 session to expand permission for off-sale liquor in Tacoma Park. We had a brief discussion about that a number of meetings ago, and this is coming back so that we can provide clear direction to the staff on how we might want to proceed with this, and if we are going to proceed, go out into the community and get some input. As Councilmember Robinson mentioned, Tuesday, and that's Tuesday, January 19th because of the Martin Luther King holiday, is Ward 3 night at the city council, and we're also tentatively scheduled to discuss sidewalks. And if I can just check with the city clerk, I was thinking Doug Parks were in there, but I don't see Doug Parks on the rolling agenda at all. Do I forget that we took it off for some reason? I was thinking it was on in January.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, it's fallen off the agenda, and it was going to be on.
Right. It came off recognizing that you may, at our next agenda planning meeting, have some thoughts about when it should come back.
Okay, okay. I just didn't want folks to think that it disappeared, it will be on there. And the following meeting at the end of the month, Monday, January 25th, among other things, we'll have a presentation on the results of the resident survey, and we have a tentative work session to discuss redevelopment of the city lot in Tacoma Junction and other junction issues. It won't just be limited to the city lot, but about how we might want to proceed in addressing possible redevelopment of the city lot in the context of wider junction issues. The next item is adoption of minutes, and we have before us minutes for September 21st, September 28th, October 5th, October 12th, and October 19th. Would somebody like to move adoption?
Move. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any need to comment on those minutes? All those in favor of adoption of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
I need to abstain, since I was not a member of the city council at that time.
All right. Yes.
Mayor Williams. What's your notion, Mayor?
Simmons and Wright.
Actually, Snipper.
Snipper and Wright. You know, now I got three s's to get straight.
Now, public comment period for anybody who would like to make any comments on items that are not on the agenda, or on any items that are on our work session agenda. If you have any comments on special session items, please hold those comments to those items.
Hi, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. You know, your favorite peace delegate, Warford. I want to tell everybody on the city council, welcome back to, welcome back for the first of the year. I hope you all had a happy new year, but I want also to let you know that it's not only happy new year, it's also the start of a new decade, and I think we should all work for peace. Also, I want to wish a happy new year to Terry Siemens and his wife, Joyce, who've done a lot for me. Also, second thing I want to do is ask everybody to have a New Year's resolution, that if they're out there, if they know anybody who has not voted this year, or has not registered to vote, they've got two resolutions to make. One is to register to vote, the second one is to get out there and vote. It's a great resolution to make for the new year and the new decade. The third thing I want to do is ask anyone out there who has children, some of the children have been asking, "What do they have to do to be like me?" One thing is, don't use weapons, do not use violence, that doesn't solve anything. These hands may be mostly gone, but they've gone from cradle to grave without carrying a gun, without using a knife, without using a baseball bat for the wrong reasons or anything. They've gone without taking any life or maiming any life. And I'm proud to say that I don't need a gun now, and I'm glad I never had one. And the third thing is, don't join gangs. The gangsters are not interested in your welfare, they'll just turn by and there's another sucker out there to take them, if you end up doing 40 years in the penitentiary, or worse off, end up dead or crippled. The gangsters are not interested in your welfare, they're only interested in what they can get out of you. And as a lot of these, even in prison, you can always listen to some of them shows, they'll tell you, they quit the gangs because they're sick and tired of doing their dirty work. But I'd like to ask the kids out there, don't even start doing their dirty work. And also, stand up and do your social and your civic duty. Whenever you see something wrong, stand up for justice. Stand up against the law. Stand up against the death penalty. Stand up against what is right and just. And that way, you'll be a peace activist or peace delegate, or whatever they want to call it. But I also want to say, Jared Tobawey pointed out about that bridge, you know, several months ago, and he's gotten that bridge repaired. It goes to show that one person can do it, at the age of eight years old. He has stood up and he has shown every child what they have the power to do, if they only choose to do it. And I commend him for that, and I would like to ask the city, is it possible to get that bridge named after him, or that footbridge named after Jared Tobawey, for the work he has done, and the example he has set for the other kids in our city, our county, and our country? Because he has already started serving his country at a very young age. And I want to tell everybody, happy new year and happy new decade, continue to work for peace, remember humanity is at the forefront of your agenda. What you can do for this world to make it better than it was when you had gotten it, that's what we should think. How can we make this world a better place than it was when we had gotten it? That way, you'll be able to work like peace, like I do, and become better council members. Thank you very much for serving on the council, everybody, and continue on as we go into 2010. New year, new decade, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alice Sims, and I live on Carroll Avenue. I'm here with Julie Bodie. She has designed, and we have put together as part of the Mosaic project.
We have designed, yes.
We have designed and we have put together for the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park, a plaque that has English and Spanish tiles that were thought of by Julie, and the leaves were created by the public on Earth Day at the co-op. And we want to present the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park and the Mosaic Project, want to present this to the city, it's ready to be hung up. And do you want to say something?
Well, we made it in the spirit of...
Did you go from the mic?
In the spirit of community and imagination, bringing a little bit of John Lennon's spirit into all of this, we had a lot of fun doing it, hope you enjoy it.
Thank you very much. I don't, here. I'll take it.
Find an appropriate place in the community center.
We'll push in Councilmember Clay's chair. It's not quite tilted up enough, we'll find a way to put it on display there a little better after the break. Crop it up with pretzel boxes. Yes.
Hello, my name is Amber Langston, and I live on Lochne Avenue, so I'm in Ward 6. And I come here today representing a group called Tacomans for Intelligent Marijuana Enforcement, or TIME, if you will. And I've been living in Tacoma Park for a couple of years now, and was hoping to help bring some of the reform to my community here that I was involved in bringing my previous community in Columbia, Missouri. And our goal for TIME is to create a safer Tacoma Park by ensuring that scarce police resources are being consistently directed toward violent and property crimes and away from nonviolent marijuana offenders. Although the Tacoma Park Police has been unable to retrieve data specifically on marijuana arrests in our city, I can say nationwide, nearly 850,000 people were arrested in the United States for marijuana in 2008, and of those, 89% were for possession only. And this accounted for around half of the total drug arrests in the country. So overwhelmingly, this is the drug that is being, that people are being punished for around the country, and if we are on par with the rest of the country, then we are definitely arresting nonviolent marijuana offenders every year. With our current, you know, financial situation as it is, making the most of our police resources is very important for the safety of our community. And I feel that the voters of Tacoma Park actually are very supportive of this notion. There, some volunteers with our organization actually did a poll on Election Day, some of you might have encountered them, and we did an informal survey to ask voters, "In order to focus police resources on violent and property crimes, would you support a local ordinance directing police to stop arresting people for possession of marijuana for personal use?" And we got a lot of favorable responses from that. Of the people who answered, 304 said yes, they would support that, only 53 said no. 30 people said they didn't know, and 37 refused to answer. So of those that answered, 80% of the voting population in Tacoma Park supports the notion of redirecting our resources towards violent and property crimes away from marijuana possession. So we have collected about 150 signatures of voters that I will be glad to pass on to you, and we're going to continue to gather signatures in order to show the support that you all have in your community, that we all have in our community, to make this change, to bring Tacoma Park back up to maybe some of the more progressive cities in the country. So thank you very much for your time. No pun intended.
Councilwoman Siemens, do you have questions?
Mayor Williams, I know that it sounds like a group of residents are kind of working on this mission, but without, I think at this point, understanding that there's really a problem. I think that what's been described here is something the police chief has issued to the council that the department does not focus on arresting people who are in possession of marijuana for personal use, in other words, smaller quantities of marijuana. And Ms. Matthews, I just wondered if you could supply some statistics to the council to tell us, like, how many arrests that we've had for marijuana use below whatever that threshold is?
I got one off the top of my head.
No, certainly not.
But your recollection is correct, most of the arrests have been for, I don't know, so it would be consistent with the distribution.
Yes, if you could, you know, give the council some numbers on that for 2009, that would be helpful. Thank you.
And can I make a statement to that? I think that, I'm very relieved to hear that this is the approach of our current police department, and I feel that it would be appropriate for, if this... And I feel that it would be appropriate for, if this is how they're already doing things, I think it would be appropriate for the city council to codify that practice and so that it can be held consistently and we know that these things, that this is the policy that is being done. So, yes.
I actually have a question. So what's your position on public consumption of marijuana? Do you think that there should, it should be treated similar to public consumption of alcohol, which would not be actually allowed?
Well, I guess that's something that is up for discussion. I, you know, I feel like there's probably community members who would discourage that. And I think that we can, you know, make that decision as a community. I feel like in any case, if there's, if somebody is over here and they're smoking a marijuana cigarette and somebody is over here and they're looking around in everybody's car in a parking lot, I would want to make sure that the police were going after the person who was, you know, potentially looking to commit a property or violent crime as most people in Tacoma Park seem to feel that that is a higher priority.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Nothing from you, okay? Then we will move on to our first item for this evening, which is a presentation by Josh Russon, who is here to give an update on the state budget and legislative session. And he's the Intergovernmental Affairs and Zone Coordinator for the Governor's Office of Community Initiatives. Welcome.
Welcome. I hope everyone had a happy holiday and a wonderful new year. Topic of discussion, I think, for the past two years, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, has been the budget and the impact the state cuts have had on local governments, in particular in your case municipalities. Many of you may be aware that the fiscal year 2011 budget outlook is not as rosy as the previous budget outlook, and we're projecting a $2 billion deficit already. And that could change depending on the economic conditions. I do not know what the exact numbers are, but the discussion has centered on there will probably be cuts to local aid again. Ninety percent cut to highway user revenue, is that plausible? Possibly. But I haven't heard exact numbers yet. So they're still in the works. The governor's submitting his legislative package or finalizing it next week. I guess I came here a little premature on that front because I don't have all the budget numbers yet. But the governor this time around has promised to at least notify the municipalities and counties more well in advance about any future cuts. I mean, the Board of Public Works comptroller, treasurer and the governor cut 1.1 billion from the operating budget for fiscal year 2010. And I know the first time when we finally cut local aid, the 454 magic number in August, it was kind of a wake-up to municipalities and the counties. I mean, the state did not really notify the locals well in advance. And we're not going to do that again. That's one thing we're committed not to do. I do have to say, there's other good news, at least at the state level, and you're probably well aware, but we still have, the state has retained its AAA bond rating. The state still retains 700 million in the rainy day fund. We did dip into that, the Board of Public Works did dip into that, the recent write-downs to balance the budget. And we do have a fund balance, the carryover into FY11 of, I think, 121 million, if I'm not mistaken. So we're, the legislature's going to have an interesting job ahead in next week or week and a half from now. The few things that I wanted, the governor wanted me to reiterate, the focus of, I think, this kind of session is job creation, job growth and job retention. And many members of your business community may be interested in a few items that the governor has on his legislative radar. One is to create a $3,000 tax credit for small businesses that will hire an unemployed Marylander. And there's a cap of 20 million total that the governor wants to have a funds aside. But this is something to try to encourage folks that are, I guess, very close to hiring, rehiring or retooling their employees, but they just need the extra push. So that's one mechanism. The other issue that has come up that the governor and the cabinet's aware of, many businesses are having issues obtaining small loans, getting credit from the banks, community banks. So the state is going to go through, the Maryland Department of Business Economic Development, the Maryland Industrial, I will have, Industrial Financing Authority, it's a pre-existing program. But the state wants to boost the funding that they have, the capabilities, and allow them to loan $50,000, a cap, well, a maximum of $50,000 to eligible businesses that needed to recapitalize or boost their inventories. And the state intends on turning around the loans in 48 hours. So just to, because it's a major issue, a lot of these small businesses and in particular municipalities are having problems getting credit right now. And I'm not sure if that's the case in Tacoma Park in particular, but elsewhere in the state that has been an issue. And the state, the governor is cognizant and wants to address this. Another item, I think, is kind of national scope, has been the unemployment insurance trust funds have been somewhat insolvent in many states. Maryland has not been in that position, but the governor has indicated that, well, the state's going to raise the rates that businesses pay into the unemployment insurance trust fund. And, but, but to help the businesses cope with this increase for, kind of provide an $83 million buffer, in the meantime, to lower the rates these companies are going to be paying temporarily through federal funds, 126 million through the Recovery Act. So it's something, there's a lot of business, members of the business community have been very concerned about the impact this rate increase will be on their bottom line. The three percent, it was originally, I think, at three percent, now it's at six percent. But with the $83 million that we're dispersing to small businesses and Maryland businesses, it should kind of provide some buffer, at least for one year. And those are really the main items I wanted to bring to your attention today. I know you have a heavy docket, so I, the governor really wanted me to focus on job growth, job creation, and I'm, he's a big supporter of municipalities, even though local aid has been cut. It was a tough decision that the Board of Public Works had to make to balance the budget. And we'll look forward to working with you during session and after session in the next few weeks. And if there's any comments I may be able to take back to the governor, we'd be more than happy to do that.
And if I can just touch for a minute on the subject that came up earlier during the council comments, I have to remember to say thank you for coming because we appreciate working with you and have worked with you ever since you've been in your job and you're very, very attentive to municipalities and our needs and coming to all the various meetings and events and conferences and communicating our needs back to the governor and bringing information from him. A number of my colleagues brought up about Ethan Allen Avenue and we've been having, which is East West Highway, Maryland State Route 410. And if I can give what I think is the quick history of it, it's mostly a state highway. There have been some sections that I believe the city has claimed or have been thrust upon us. There have been, there has been a little bit of a hopscotch pattern, but I would say the majority of it has been a state highway and the state has maintained it forever. And within the last year, state highway has said to us, no, that's not ours, that's yours. And you need to maintain it. It's not, you know, not our problem. And that's just ignoring 100 years of history. And it looks from our vantage point like an attempt to dump a road that needs work on us. And it's been hard to get state highway to do anything with that section of road. It's a two-lane road that has a lot of heavy truck and bus traffic. It, I think the technical term is it pumps. The base isn't very good for all of the heavy traffic on it. And so you get that squishing of the asphalt up into big ridges that then cars scrape on and it makes it tough to drive. And the potholes there, as mentioned on Flower Avenue, on Carroll Avenue, and it's tough to get the state kind of down this far to do that. And we know that times are tight, budgets are tight, and that state highway has a lot of work to do on a lot of state highways, but we just want to make sure that nobody forgets down here and nobody dumps that road in particular on us. And if you can convey that back to the governor so that he can talk with the state highway folks and the transportation secretary and we can get a resolution on this, we've been trying to get it resolved for a year and it just hasn't been resolved.
Barb was going to ask, have you correspond, I'm assuming you correspond with the district engineer about this?
Yes.
Okay.
About you some history and all that.
Sure, appreciate it. I can look into that. Yeah, I recall this coming up once, it was, I guess, the initial conversation you were having with the state, sort of seemed promising at the time, but I guess it hasn't been resolved. So I can look into that. At least they have, at least the state should indicate if it's on their radar and if we can come to make reasonable conclusions.
And if it's not on the state's radar, as you mentioned, the legislative session is about to start and a number of us will be in Annapolis on many occasions. And we would be happy to go by and visit whoever we need to do, need to visit in Annapolis to make sure that it does get on their radar. Other colleagues have questions? Councilmember Wright?
I wanted to read all Bruce's comments, but ditto for that, the road. I'm more interested, you know, we talked a lot about the cuts and I know it's an election year and it's never popular to raise taxes, but I'd be curious to see if the governor is thinking about any particular areas that I think would be good public policy where he might raise taxes. And they're basically what I would consider sin taxes, right? So there's thoughts about raising the alcohol and tobacco taxes. I would also consider gasoline a version of sin. And so I would be a fan of gasoline or energy taxes where that money specifically goes back then to dealing with the infrastructure problems that we have around public transportation that force people to use their cars or in the case of broader energy tax, you know, giving people tax credits for the people who do the right thing in terms of energy efficiency in their homes or in their businesses or that sort of stuff. So I'm curious if there's any thought about that this year.
Well, there is a discussion about revenue raising options to at least fund, you know, help fund education, even our basic infrastructure, our transportation system. But the political appetite, I guess in the legislature's not exactly there. There are, I mean, the governor, I mean, we're all aware the governor did, in the state, raised revenues right after the governor was elected during the special session. I'm not sure if it's, it doesn't seem like he's really inclined to raise revenues at this time. It just looks like we're going to be cutting the budget again. I mean, there's discussion, if the legislature wants to do that, the Senate President and the Speaker, I think the governor may go along with it, but I'm not sure if he's taking the lead on that right now. But I cannot fully speak on...
Yeah, I guess I would just bring the message back. I understand not wanting to broadly raise income taxes, but if there's, I think there's particular taxes where you can get revenue and it's also good public policy because it drives the right incentives for behaviors that you want with people, so.
I mean, and, you know, to reiterate, I think the fuel tax hasn't been raised since former Governor William Donald Schaefer was in office. And the alcohol tax, the tax on, I think spirits or beer hasn't been raised since like the 50s and one had, and the other one hasn't been raised since the 70s, if I'm not mistaken. So it's been kind of the same level for decades, for over half a century, depending on...
The beer, the beer and alcohol tax is not a percentage tax.
Right.
So it's not like it's gone up as the, the price of beer's gone up. It's like a purely like penny thing on the gallon of, or whatever the measure of unit of alcohol is, so.
There's discussion of it. I'm just not sure if it's going to come out of the governor's office at this time with his legislative package. But I believe there are a number of legislators they're talking about. It's been in the media for a little, for the past two weeks about the alcohol tax in particular. The fuel tax has been brought up by the Senate President, but I'm not sure if he's going to follow through with it. He's, it mentioned it about seven months ago.
All the constituents I talked to would be supporters of his types of policies.
I'm with Josh on the classifying energy as sin. And the governor could become somewhat greener if he took that attitude perhaps. On the, as far as cutting goes and so forth, I'm going to circle back to a broader issue which I don't really expect, I want to make sure it continues to be on your radar.
Sure.
We had a task force here, a committee here some years back called TASD. You may have heard this word around a couple of times. And it's an acronym and it stands for the Tax and Service Duplication Issues Committee. Tax and Service Duplication Issues, right? And it studied the duplicative services and taxes that we and the county grapple with. And at that time, that committee came back with a rough ballpark for how much we subsidize the county. In other words, what percentage of our budget we spend that we wouldn't have to if we were treated fairly by, in our opinion, by the county. And it was somewhere between 25 and 50 percent of our budget. All right? So think about how much of the state budget is and then take half of that or a quarter of that and figure that's how much you're subsidizing your next bigger brethren. We're subsidizing our, the 85 percent of the folks in Montgomery County who don't live in cities to the tune of a quarter to a half of our budget every year. And we have no recourse when it comes to the county. And that's our biggest issue in my mind. It's our biggest issue here. You're cutting our revenue sources by 1% or 5% would be disaster. But if we're spending upwards of 25 plus up to 50 percent of our own budget, just subsidizing the county for services they don't give to us, it's a complete disaster. I just want to make sure that's on your radar.
Well, the, this is not just a Tacoma Park issue.
Correct.
It's almost an MML, Maryland Municipal League wide issue. And in some jurisdictions, it's, I would say, it's more apparent than others.
Right. Absolutely right.
So I think it's on our radar. There would need to be legislation. I'm not sure if this is the year that they will consider it. But there's, I think there's plenty of delegates there and senators there cognizant that they, something needs to change. And I guess it also depends on the relationship that some municipalities have with the counties.
Well, the counties have, no county is forced to be, to give the cities a break, I mean, a fair shake, because they have all the power to do that. And I'll give you a little quiz. Maybe you've heard me give you this quiz before or give others this quiz before. And that is, since the state gave to the counties the authority to make new municipalities, with the exception of a few around Silver Spring, I mean Chevy Chase, and that, that transfer of power from the state authorizing new cities to the counties authorizing new cities, so it was 50 years ago, and the quiz is, how many new cities have there been?
Since the...
Since 1959, when the state gave to the county the authority to create new cities.
Probably, what, five or seven since...
Zero. There have been zero cities created, with the exception of a few around Silver Spring. And that's where you're right, the five.
And they were originally special tax districts before.
So there's an imbalance of power between cities and counties. And I know you understand that, but, but it plays itself out in a variety of ways. And if we're talking about fiscal issues tonight, I'll bring up that 25 to 50 percent of our budget, which was a good faith estimate on our part to figure out what we're, to what extent we're subsidizing the county. And it is, I mean, and I don't expect you to go and solve it or the mayor or the governor to go and solve it this legislative session, but I just want to make sure it's on your radar.
Definitely. It is, I mean, MML, I think every time I see Scott Hancock, I think he brings it up. Does he even joke, ribbing me? Does it even joke, ribbing me and deny just getting around? But it is a serious issue. And I think it just depend, I mean, no county has to give intergovernmental revenues or tax equity, whatever you want to call it, to the municipalities. But some jurisdictions are more generous than others. And it, I mean, it's amazing. It's amazing how some of the personalities come into play, so.
And there, the majority of the counties don't have to do anything. And the ones that are required to do something are, I think the language is they shall confer with the municipalities. So all they have to do is confer, but they can decide to do whatever they want. So even, even those municipalities and counties like Montgomery who have some power don't really have any.
So there's our big bitch thing. Even though Article 66 is supposed to be, it's supposed to be equal entities, I think. But I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, let's get that right. And if our colleague is still in California, she would go, yeah, she, she, when she got to Maryland, I know she thought that the way things are set up here is pretty crazy. Any other, yes?
Yes, sir. Fred Schultz, Ward 6. Ward 6 is over on the east side of Tacoma Park and bumps up against the intersection more familiarly known to many people as Langley Park. So starting with that, I want to just extend the community's appreciation to the governor for his support of the Purple Line, which will be running along our Ward 6 in Tacoma's, the city of Tacoma Park's northern edge as it comes down University Boulevard. That's going to be a tremendous asset to the city and to the people in Ward 6, but even larger to the community on the other side of University Boulevard, which is Prince George's County. Second, I wanted to ask you about these three initiatives that you mentioned. The possible 3,000 dollar tax credit, the possible midfa getting involved in 50,000 dollar loans, and perhaps a subsidy from, for the unemployment trust fund to help reduce unemployment insurance. Are those items that will require legislation or are those items that are under the purview of the governor's executive authority?
They, they will be, legislation is required to create, well, create the tax credit in particular, the program under DBED. It's pre-existing, but the funding, the governor will be submitting it with his legislative package. So the governor creates the budget and the legislature's only empowered to take away, fortunate or unfortunate. And so the governor, it's going to be part of legislative package. It requires legislation and some statutory changes under the law.
Okay.
Not sure what the, what the outcome's going to be once the legislature is able to get their hands on it. But so far, the governor's intent is 3,000 dollars tax credit per individual that's hired that was unemployed and then the 50,000 dollar cap, that's small bridge loan program. So that's the intended goal. We will see how it turns out. But it also requires, the governor intends on having an offset, that we have to have a balanced budget, so.
Sure.
The money has to come from somewhere.
Yeah, isn't that the way?
Right, it's supposed to be.
Darn. Is there any way to glean any further information on any of these initiatives at this point or is it something that, you know, we're just going to have to be a little patient to, before we start getting some more details on, say, like this midfa proposed financing?
I may be able to get some additional information. I know, I'm not sure if there's a cap as to the size of your company or gross revenue. So I may be able to get that information from DBED, Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development. But some of the other details we should have, I should have some concrete answers in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Session starts with January 13th, if I'm not mistaken, so.
What would be an efficient way from your point of view, not necessarily mine, to get that information?
I can send it to Barbara.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll, I will be able to get a hold of the information and it'll be public by then too, so it's fine.
Yeah, because they do sound, they actually sound to me as though they would make a difference. They could be a very effective leveraging of the state's budget to help achieve the things that the governor wants. The last item I wanted to, to bring to your attention is that I read in the Washington Post a few weeks ago where the state was obtaining a certain amount, I guess it was stimulus money, to deal with problems of crime along the border of Montgomery County and Prince George's County. And that the, the effort was to be directed to see what could be done to stimulate cooperation between the two jurisdictions. And I may have my, my memory fails me more often than not, but I think that that was sort of the, the general gist of this. I think it was funds in excess of, well, you don't want to go that far as to how much it was. It's a pretty substantial amount of money.
It was like 23, 230,000, 23?
I think it was in the millions.
Well, then it was 23 million.
Yeah. Lot of money, particularly given the difficulties of the state budget. But I was impressed by that. But it struck me is that, what was being proposed in this?
If I'm not mistaken, and I wasn't following the state's proposal closely, but I believe it's really focused, the intent is to focus on gang, cross-border gang issues.
Right.
And drug trafficking.
Thanks.
So I believe the county police forces, you know, Prince George's County Police, Montgomery County Police would be the recipients. They have, the state hasn't determined which county of law enforcement city was received which amount of dollars, but it's supposed to boost their narcotics division, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, that's, that's helpful because that, that rings true based on what my recollection was of that article. But the point that I wanted to offer to you was that the city has, has had a program that has been, that was originally funded under the state Hot Spots Program that was started by Lieutenant Governor Kathleen Kennedy some years ago under Governor Glenn Banning's administration to do, do a very similar sort of thing. As part of the legacy of that effort, we have here in this area, the Tacoma-Langley area, a program called C-Safe.
Yeah.
And it struck me as kind of odd that there was this proposal to do something that we're already doing. And ironically, that program that originally funded C-Safe has no longer available. And we may be forced to terminate C-Safe. And I was thinking, gee, this is an interesting juxtaposition of events, if I have my facts straight, that there's a program here to start this work on trying to manage gang activity and cross-jurisdictional drug issues. When we might have a model program already in place that's been doing extraordinarily well for a number of years and truly making a difference, even in the words of our own police chief, that that couldn't be used as a model for this program. And at the same time, also ensure its continued support by the state of Maryland for doing what it's been doing and not, and not altering its, its mission. Just wanted to bring that to your attention because it's something that we value very much in this area.
Well, I can look into that. I know the governor's office of Crime Control and Prevention administers the grant funds for the C-Safe program.
Yeah.
And originally, I think that's where the hotspot program funding came from.
That's correct.
And I wasn't sure, I wasn't aware that they were, I'm not surprised that they pulled money out of the program. I didn't know if they were completely pulling all of the money. So I can double check and also see if the state intends on using some of the funds, these recovery funds, federal funds, to apply towards the C-Safe program. I, if I'm not mistaken, the state, I think, stopped expanding the C-Safe or hotspots as a funding. I know we have a certain number around the state, but I can double check and get back to you on that.
Anything you can do in that regard would be very helpful, I think.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I've been to the crossroads region and Erwin Mack, I met with him and I know he's involved on the issue. He's a big proponent of C-Safe program and it seems to be very successful.
I'm another proponent of it.
Appreciate it. I'll take it, I'll definitely let the governor's office know about it.
I appreciate your time here tonight. Thank you very much.
Councilor Seans, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Josh, for coming here tonight. Appreciate it. It's, you know, things that we talk about occasionally, but it's nice to have the concentrated discussion. Appreciate your time. You know, one of the things that you've talked about, the governor's talked about, is the importance of, during these difficult economic times, of not only trying to get by, but trying to improve things to improve the tax revenues. And as you know, we have the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor that runs from the Tacoma-Langley crossroads on down to the District of Columbia. That is, let's say, a underutilized commercial strip. And I certainly appreciate the work that the governor and the state has done in helping to formulate plans to do economic development along that strip, coordinating with Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Tacoma Park. And I just want to thank you for that effort and thank the governor and also ask that you redouble the efforts along that area. Thank you.
Definitely. I will take that back. And I know, I'm not sure where we are on the project right now, but I know the studies have been completed, if I'm not mistaken. But I don't know where we're moving next with it, so maybe a funding issue, but I'll look into that, so.
Well, we, we're confident in this, we'll get the support we need when that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council, thank you for your time. And I will see you in Annapolis, I'm assuming, hopefully opening day of session. So at any time, stop by the second floor of the State House. And I'm going to leave some stuff for Barbara. Thank you.
We'll now move to our special session. And the first item on that agenda is the second reading ordinance authorizing the sale on issuance of state infrastructure bonds for renovation of the Public Works Facility. And I will hold on a second and then see if the city manager wants to lead that off. Would the city manager like to lead off with any comments on the second reading ordinance?
No, this is just simply the? Second reading of the ordinance that was presented to the council at the end of November. As the council may recall, there is a requirement in the city charter that there be at least a 14-day period between first and second reading of any ordinance regarding the issuance of debt.
Okay, and I'll point out that this is solely a discussion about the authority to bond for a all or a portion of the proposed renovation. And we have, it provides flexibility in regards to the amount and term of the bond with those details to be worked out as the state brings that issuance forth. And I believe that it essentially, if we pass this, this would essentially make it so that the mayor is authorized to kind of sign on the final details that will not be able to be determined until that point in time. So in terms of the rate and all those final little details, this would authorize me to sign off on those. First, I see three hands.
I can go left.
First, I'll say, does anybody want to move this?
Move, second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Siemens, and therefore I will give Councilmember Snipper first shot at it.
Wow. Well, I, I'm happy to move this. I support this quite strongly. There are a number of reasons why I think that we should go ahead, not only with the bond funding, but with the renovation itself. I'm very glad the way this has been structured so that if there were changes to the project, they can be accounted for without a whole lot of coming back to the council for modifications, going back to the state or some similar thing. I like the way the city has drafted this up. I support the renovation because I, having toured the facility, having seen the staff in action, the city desperately needs to renovate that facility. There's a number, large enough of things that are either going to fall apart momentarily. If we have another big wind, some of those buildings look like they'll just blow over. And then there are some things that will cause us environmental problems if you don't deal with them. There's a whole bunch of energy efficiency kinds of issues. We'll save some money going forward on that. And so there's reasons to do it. There are extra reasons to do it now in that financing is relatively cheap. It's about as cheap as it's been a long time. Construction costs are also very cheap. There's a large number of potential bidders out there who are looking for work, so we will probably get quite favorable terms on the construction itself. While the city is a bit tight financially, we have been planning for this for a long time and I'm sure we will be able to work out funding for it. So I'll stop there.
Councilmember Siemens, your second.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things. One, I certainly support this and also hope that the council will think about how in the future we might do a better job of maintaining our facilities and upgrading them gradually rather than putting us in the position where now we're in bad economic times, but we have a facility that is in dismal condition. And I had one, one question for the city manager and that is, I wondered if this is just for state bonds? I know the federal government has some stimulus money for the Build America Bonds that is for municipalities. Would, that may even go through the state, I don't know. I just wonder if this gives us the flexibility to bond in whatever manner we deem best?
The ordinance that's before the council this evening is specifically designed to authorize the city to obtain funding through the state local government infrastructure program. And that's all that it does. Each program has its own requirements.
All right. And I guess, I guess that's my other part of the question and my third one of two. Are we going to check into other bonding mechanisms or just stick with the state?
We have historically just stayed with the state. For a small municipality, it provides a pretty cost-effective mechanism to issue the bonds because we're pooled with other entities, so those issuance costs are spread. If we were to go out on our own just because of the need for bond council, there would be a lot of technical overhead that we avoid by going through this program. Typically, when I've worked for cities that have done it on their own for a variety of reasons, you either have to buy insurance or go through the rating process. You have a financial advisor who will basically do all the prospectus work that the state is doing on our behalf.
All right, thank you.
Councilor?
So just to understand clearly what we're voting on. If we vote yes on this, we don't have an opportunity at some future date to say, this is actually authorizing this to happen? And we don't, it's not going to come before the council again for us to say, do you actually want to do it?
It is authorizing our continued participation. As the council may recall, the state actually had hoped to have everything in place by January 1st and that just didn't work with our December recess. I think there is still an opportunity if the council wishes to say no, but I would acknowledge that window is very, very narrow. I think I will be asked on Wednesday to file, to sign a letter of intent with the state, which is sort of another step in the process. I believe they will actually be in a position to get bids back on the bonds and we will be asked to sign closing documents probably by the end of the month or the 1st of February.
So I'm very conflicted because I think if we're going to bond based on the rates we would get.
and it's the right way to finance a significant chunk of this public works facility, I mean, I've said in the past even that we should think about paying for the whole thing through a bond because the cost of money is so low. I still have significant reservations about the scope of work for the public works renovation because I feel like there's still some unanswered questions in my mind about which services we should provide in the public works department longer term. And I think the answers to those questions are through some detailed financial analysis about some of those, whether those services should be done by the city or the county. And I know we're going to get into this discussion probably next, but, you know, Barb has provided us some information, but it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison with some of that. And I feel that I'm authorizing something that, for money that I'm not fully willing to spend all of it on the public works renovation because there's things like sanitation that I think we need to look at more closely. I think there's some unanswered questions about road maintenance that we need to look at more closely. And it's not that I advocate that we should get, we should give sanitation back to the county, but I feel like we haven't looked at it properly, and it's part of our judicial diligence and judicial responsibility to look at what would cost us to do it versus if we let the county do it, and what the, if there also is any service impact, and make a full decision. I don't feel like I have the information to make that decision yet, so I'm conflicted about how I'm going to vote on this issue.
Councilor Robinson?
I wasn't going to say anything. I do support this bonding, but I just wanted to point out to Josh in the audience that this conversation is a direct result of our conflict with the county. We're, as Josh, as Councilmember Wright just said, should we give this, should we give trash collection back to the county? Well, why would we do that? Well, only because it might save us some money because they don't, we're not getting a fair shake from them in the first place. So these kind of tactical decisions that we struggle with, I don't believe we should be struggling with at all. I think that these are, you know, we should, we should provide services which are appropriate at our level, the municipal level, as opposed to the county level. But, but we have a, we're, we're in good shape providing these services through our public works department. I'm glad we do. And I think that to give them back to the county from a strategic perspective or a tactical perspective is, you know, it's, it's an awful position for us to be considering, so.
I share Councilmember Robinson's level of frustration about why we might give it back to the county. But I'm not optimistic that the legislature is going to change the structure under which we operate with the county because, basically, there's no political reason for them to, because only 15% of people in the state of Maryland live in municipalities. The ratio is about the same for Montgomery County, maybe a tiny bit higher. And so they don't have the, there's not the political will there to do it, and I'm not optimistic that the campaign will be mounted to change that anytime soon, so.
We kind of have to wait for the counties to fall under their own weight and then realize the advantage of having municipalities help them out with their service provision.
Yeah, well, maybe they might realize that if we give them back something, they have to realize that they have to do it.
Absolutely right.
So.
Councilmember Schultz?
Oh, I've already spoken-
In favor of our supporting this action at the first reading, so I'm not going to repeat what I said at that point in time. But my understanding here, and I just want to make it clear to those who are on here and listening to us elsewhere, is that this gives us the authority to issue a bond backed by the full faith and credit of the city of Tacoma Park. If we don't do this now, we basically drop out of the cycle, and we'd have to wait another 12 months to do that. Is that not correct, or am I?
The state at most will do two issuances per year. There's usually one in the, late in the calendar year or early in the calendar year, and then possibly another one in the fall. It all depends on the number of participants. There's a number of municipalities currently who have projects that they are pursuing and are seeking financing. There may be the same opportunity in the fall. That's not a guarantee. It's kind of up in the air every year.
Or there may not be. But reading the financial pages these days, there's, the chairman of the Federal Reserve is talking about the buildup of inflationary pressures within the economy as the economy starts to expand out of this horrible recession. And I'm concerned as, that this simply means pressure on interest rates, which means interest rates going up, which means in six months to a year from now, we could be paying a lot more interest to build, to do the, to the repairs, the improvements than we do, than we would if we can get this bond issue authorized now and get it financed this spring. The longer we wait, it's almost a certain the interest rates are going to go up. So I think that the timing is critical here, and I think this is the time to do it. It does not mean, however, that simply because we float a $2 million or a $3 million bond issue, and the authorization is for up to 3 million, that we necessarily have to spend every nickel of that to renovate the public works yard in a certain way. The proposed financing is based on the plans that have been produced by architects and engineers with the help of the Department of Public Works and all of that that's already been done. But there is room for discussion, so I understand it. If we decide, for example, that certain things within that construction program should be deferred or not done at all, between, so all we're doing right now is just saying we want to take advantage of the opportunity to get this funding, and at least we have that in place. The rest, will there be a little bit of time left for us to make some decisions with regard to, like, the sanitation, the right-of-way, and that sort of thing?
I just want to be clear. The, the purpose for which the city would be obtaining the bond financing is very specific, and legally, those funds can only be used for what is described in the ordinance and what we have submitted in the application to the state. We have been fairly broad in terms of describing it as being for the renovation of the public works facility. It's not listing each and every component, but it would not be legal, quite frankly, to use those funds for any other purpose. Additionally, once you obtain the bond funds, if you have no mechanism to spend them on the project as listed, that creates all sorts of issues that I won't bore everyone with. What I would encourage the council to do, while there is still some time, admittedly not a lot, for further discussion about what components you'd like to see in the project, and you don't need, once again, to decide that this evening, but certainly what staff has recommended is to bond a lesser amount and to pay for a portion of the project with cash reserves. If there is any inclination on the part of the council to scale back the project, that's even further, further argument for bonding less rather than more. What it would do if you chose to do a scaled-back project is just means that the city would use less of its cash reserves.
And if I can just say that, I didn't hear Councilmember Schultz advocating any of the things that you were saying we couldn't do. I heard advocating that we still have flexibility for the components within the public works renovation-
Correct.
-given what we would be doing tonight.
And this authorizes us to do between 2 and 3 million bond, correct?
Up to 3.
Okay, so I would just say that I will vote for this, knowing that I have the right to vote against the scope of work at some future point, in the very near future, on the public works renovation, and would encourage us to do exactly as you talked about, to strike a balance between, as we discussed that, what's actually going to be in the scope of work and the range of the bond.
What I would just add, and you don't need, once again, to decide it this evening, but perhaps the mayor and I can talk about this tomorrow when we're doing our agenda scheduling. The construction drawings are essentially at 100%. They are in the process of having last-minute review and tweaking. We are scheduled, if this ordinance passes this evening, to go out to bid on the project in January. That can obviously be held up, but obviously there are favorable conditions now, so I would just encourage the council, if you would like to revisit what components have previously been discussed and tentatively agreed upon, that that discussion take place sooner rather than later. Vote for the bonding as well as for moving forward on the bid process.
And I just want to make a couple of comments on this. I'm going to be voting in favor of this ordinance, and I appreciate the information that the city manager provided to us on the possibility of changing the mix of the services that we offer in the public works department. And it seemed from the information that you gave us that if there were something to be considered, it would be, consider the possibility of transferring responsibility for sanitation to, to the county or private or whatever it might be. And it struck me that in the information that you provided, that in assigning that portion of the renovation that we would potentially not spend if we had made that decision and were ready to take that out was on the order of $384,000, and that that is about, you know, roughly 10% of the, of the project. It's also only slightly more than the amount that we will need to authorize if we have the capital improvement program in the FY 11 budget for the purchase of two trash trucks to continue that work with the sanitation department. Those are in there for $357,000. The big cost of doing sanitation is not the additional piece of this project for that portion of that building which would be needed for sanitation. It's for the capital equipment to continue doing sanitation, and it's for the nine personnel?
Nine, nine full-time.
Nine, nine full-time employees, and all of their, all of the ongoing costs of doing that. So that the, the thing that I think this shows is that the, the portion of the building for that, if we were to go that route in the near term, is just adding a little bit of building that would be some bays for some of those trucks. And I can see where that can be creatively reused for whatever we might need. We're not creating this big behemoth that all of a sudden we don't need. It's just a tiny portion of a building. And so it makes sense to go forward with this ordinance. And let me just say that in terms of the, the potential amounts that we might do under this, with the information on the fiscal impact on page two of the cover sheet, when it shows the total interest payment and the principal amount for some possible amounts, when you look at the first choice, which is a 2 million bond for an issuance of a 10-year term, the total interest payment on that is a little bit under $260,000 over the 10 years. When you break that down, if we were to bond that amount, and the combination of principal and interest, we're looking at about $226,000 per year. That's not a terribly big amount to be paying for the renovation of the public works facility. So I will be voting in favor of this, and I appreciate it, getting that additional information. Councilmember Wright?
I, I just, a couple of things. It, it does, from the information that I received, seem like sanitation makes the most sense possibly. Look, but that's only because that's the only one we received close to any detailed information about. So on road maintenance, we didn't, we didn't really get any real numbers, and really, what we were told is we need to look at this closely. There's a lot of implications, and we need to talk to the city attorney more. So we don't really have the numbers to understand what the implication is there. And yes, it seems like a small percentage of the budget, but I think most taxpayers would say like, hey, don't spend $350,000 if you don't need it to, right? So like, that, that's real money. And what was the number we got, the surprise? Sorry to pick on you, Josh. What was the number we got in the surprise from the state?
It was just under $600,000.
So that's like half of the, you know, one year, half of that, that surprise. Who knows what the surprise is going to be from the state this year. So just to point out that I think most residents would say like, yeah, that seems like a small number in the total budget of the city or the project, but it's still, we're only, our budget's 250 million. $350,000 is still not something to sneeze at.
Right. And, and my point was that the bigger number to sneeze at is not that portion of this project. It's the ongoing costs for the capital equipment and the people.
That, that is the bigger thing, but if you, if we can make that decision, if, and I've been pushing for us to look at this more closely for a while, so I feel, you know, don't mind me if I'm a little frustrated because we're now at the last minute with the tent or head, like, making the decision. It is the big picture, but we shouldn't move forward with some small piece that's still $350,000 if it's not the right thing to do, and we should quickly get the data together and make the decision. That's my point.
If I may, the question that was specifically posed to staff was, was the impact on the renovation? As I indicated in the memo included in the packet, there are other issues such as road maintenance, equipment maintenance, that are worthwhile for the council to review and discuss in terms of what is being proposed as an expenditure for the public works renovation. There's virtually no money going into those areas, which is part of the reason why we focused on sanitation. It is a, probably one of the most expensive components of the project because the building will be reconstructed. Certainly, I think if the council wishes to talk about some of the other service delivery options, we could certainly try to put together whatever information we can, but it's not really going to change the impact on the project itself.
Is Councilmember Clay still with us on the phone?
Put a trooper.
Good. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I support the bonding for the public works facility at the $3 million range, and I, I don't feel like we're going to change the scope of work, but I'm certainly open to talking about it.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none. This is a second reading ordinance. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Clay, for sticking around for that vote that you wanted to be on the record for. We appreciate your presence, and you can now, you can now hang up and go climb the Matterhorn.
I'm going off the Matterhorn, and the Small World, the renovation is beautiful. I'll bring you guys pictures. See you guys later.
Thank you.
Bye.
Um, we will now move to the last special session item, which is the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement, the land license agreement with the co-op. Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Are there any comments on this resolution? We had a good bit of discussion about this when it came before us, what, about two months ago? And we basically said no, and now it's come back to us revised, and what we asked for, and the co-op has agreed to it, so as a result of that discussion, we now have what we consider to be a fair deal. Councilmember Snapper?
I would only say, I believe it was Councilmember Clay who initiated that.
Well, we won't give her credit. She hung up. Yes, it was. Thank you, Councilmember Clay, in absentia while climbing the Matterhorn.
Right.
Is there any public comment on this resolution? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We can do the work session item before taking a break, or we can take a quick break. You folks are here. Would you like to just charge ahead so you can leave and go home? Okay, then we'll, then we will, I think I knew the answer to that question, but. We will now move to the work session item, which is discussion of facility, yes, facility used by the community band, the swing band, and the Tacoma Singers. And we have a couple of folks here from those groups. Maybe you might want to come forward and sit at the table so that we can involve you in the discussion, get any information we might need from you. Welcome. If you all would like to introduce yourselves, then we'll proceed from there.
My name is Carol Wyman. I'm the director of the Tacoma Park Singers. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Gene Hurman. I'm with the Tacoma Park Band.
I'm Joe Gaffney. I'm also with the Tacoma Park Band.
I'm Danny Epps, the swing band, formerly with the Tacoma Park, but now with the swing band.
Welcome, all of you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your patience in sitting through the other items, and I'm sure you learned a lot that you wanted to learn. Either that or you caught a quick cat nap. We're coming back to this because we've talked about it a number of times, and I think we have some additional information about your groups and kind of your bona fides for wanting more access and the need for it. And we have a little bit more information from the city manager in terms of how often you all have been using it and how often you've had problems in getting it when you need it. The thing for me that became clear in the time between the last discussion and this discussion is seeing the information provided by the band in terms of being the official city of the band, which I guess I had always, you know, heard but didn't quite believe. But then when presented with the evidence, that is the case. And I think that could make some difference in terms of how we deal with your needs. And getting information from both the singers and the swing band is also helpful. So maybe if each of you just wants to take a minute or two and go through anything you want to tell us, then we'll, or not, you don't have to.
But in addition to the information we have provided?
Or just the, kind of the quick executive summary, or, you know, or say, yes, you know, we've gotten the space we need, or no, you know, we haven't gotten it and therefore we've had to do such and such so that we can hopefully put the issues surrounding your access and your use to bed so that we don't have to do this again.
Just kind of in addition to the information that you were given about it, and just to, again, affirm that the Tacoma Park Singers is actually a very active community group. We have 31 members now. Several members are here this evening with me. About one-third?
How many?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one members. And about one-third of those members kind of are currently Tacoma Park residents or have had formal associations with the city. And we perform, you know, at least eight to 10 concerts per year. Two of those are public concerts. The remainder are at retirement homes. And as I indicated here, we performed at several city locations, Victory Towers. We were down Franklin Apartments in December. We have performed at community events, the, over at the gazebo in December for several, for the open house for the merchants. And we have also, for two years now, performed as part of the art fair, for the art commission fair that was held in December. And we do not charge. We do all of this free of charge. The music that we buy is supported by kind of dues to the group. The membership pays for the music. And we, you know, feel that we are performing a community service, not only to the local community, but where we go. And we have kind of a number of places that we are really welcomed at least once or twice a year. And our music is very much appreciated. And I feel that we are really doing a service for the city in the way that we're able to provide a very positive experience. When the policy changed for the building use, we opted to go ahead and make arrangements renting through the Montgomery County system because we felt with the number of rehearsals that we need each year, the 43 rehearsals, we needed just a regular kind of guaranteed space that we had some control over. When I first went to, you know, started to work with the city, I had to go through the recreation department. And I was told the recreation department has first, has the priority on that space. And because we're a singing group, we need the space, we need a piano. And there was only one place that had the piano. And so I was, you know, always kind of had to wait and see what they were going to do. And I felt that we needed something that, as I said, we had more control over. We are interested in performing in the city. We're interested in performing in the auditorium. We would like some rehearsals, you know, in there if possible, and would hope that as a community group that has members that are part of the community and represents the Tacoma Park community, that we would be able to have some access to that auditorium as a rehearsal and a performance space.
And you say you're currently getting space at Piney Branch?
Yes, we use the music room at Piney Branch.
And you pay for that?
Yes, we do.
And what do you pay?
We pay $7 an hour, so we have a two-hour rehearsal. Our costs for the group are over $500 in the rental, you know, for the year because of the number of rehearsals. And then on top of that, you know, we pay for our music. In the past, there had been some small stipends that had been given to us by the city, but that's long ago.
So currently, your rental costs for your rehearsals is about $500 a year?
Yes.
And when you were here, it was zero?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think I sent you, you know, sort of the synopsis of the band. It was formed back in the 70s. It was officially christened as the City Band in, I think it was 1980 or '81. And, you know, we are a community group. We are looking for musicians, musicians all the time. We have a significant number that are Tacoma Park residents. We have played at a number of venues, both in the city and in the surrounding community. And we started out, we were part of the, when Tacoma Park Junior High School was a community school, we used the music room as part of that program there. And then when that program ended and the school had to be renovated, we were looking, you know, looked for another space, which was provided by the city. And we ended up at Hefner Park, which we are currently using. And it is of the right size for us. And I think just simply, we would like to continue to use that. We are also a, we don't charge for our performances. And so whatever money is generated comes from the members of the band itself. And so we would like to continue to utilize, you know, Hefner Park once a week for our practice.
Okay.
Generally speaking, my job is to open up Hefner every Wednesday night. About every two years, I have to go back to the rec department and reorganize the situations and say, hey, look, we do belong here and this is what happens. Generally speaking, I have very, very good cooperation from the department, for the most part. There were some small problems, but one of the things that would probably make it just a little bit handier for me would be, like for instance, if I had a key so I could open up the door on Wednesdays. Now there's an electronic pocket. When we started, we had a key all the time. There was no problem. I don't know why there's a problem now. Eric did give me a key for a couple of weeks and then he took it back. That's not a really big thing. When I get there and the door's locked, I call him on the phone and say, Eric, the door's locked again. Tonight, he was able to open it up automatically from downtown. If sometime I get there at quarter to seven and he's not downtown, it's a different matter altogether. Then we get into gas going down there and getting the car, getting them to come up here with a car and open that door. That's neither here nor there. Right now, things look very good. There's just one minor thing. We use it every Monday night. That is to say, if it's open after we've had our three drives at it, we get it again. For right now, we are good because we have, for this year coming, we have up to the middle of March, free rental. After that, I have to every week go to them and tell them ahead of time, we're going to be there Monday night, can we use it? We're going to be there Monday night, can we use it? And they have to send me back a receipt and all that sort of thing. And somehow, we didn't have to do that two years ago or one and a half years ago. We could just say, okay, for the quarter, we're going to use it these nights. Is there any problem? They would say, no, there isn't. Or these nights, we have a national holiday, so you can't use it. There's never been, except maybe once or twice, someone else paying to use that facility on a Monday night. I don't know. But in any case, we are happy with what we're doing right now. The only thing I could ask would be if we didn't have to, A, every week ahead of time say, we're going to be there next Monday, we're going to be there next Monday, they know we're going to be there next Monday. I mean, but it's not rocket science. The other thing would be the key issue, because there could be a time when somebody's not down in the city hall to come up and open it up for us if that lock doesn't work. And that lock has been a problem.
Okay. Thank you. I'll give a question for them.
Just is the, I know there's also the issue of the storage of the music at the facility. Has that been solved or?
Well, it's to our satisfaction, yeah, we haven't moved the cabinet and everything seems to be hunky-dory. I mean, if push came to shove, I would say that one of the previous rec department personnel told me that when they rehabbed Hefner, which happened about a year ago or so, they might be able to take those cabinets and put them in that locked room. But that didn't happen, and we're not asking that it happened. Where they are right now doesn't seem to be a problem for us. I don't know who it is a problem for, but it's just the cabinets, that's it. It needs being moved and moved to other parts of the room so that if there is a reason they shouldn't be where they are, we could put them in corners or somewhere else. But we need them to be in the building.
I just want to make sure that that's, yeah.
We need them there because if somebody comes in and needs a piece of music, it would, you know, the music is right there. Otherwise, you'd have to send them, say, to somebody's house or something like that. And so it really is essential that they.
I do know that there are others, I mean, one of the, some of the reasons I've heard was that we are not supposed to have property there. But there's plenty of property in that locked room. That is, you know, rubs and things that belong to other organizations.
Right, right. But we don't need to get into that.
Okay, that's fine.
And I want to hear from the swing band.
Dan Epps, and I sent some information, and I'm not sure everyone had a chance to get it back.
Yes.
So I won't repeat a lot of that. But I moved, I just want to highlight, point that in 1989, for several years, I was with this man. These are my band members, associates. And in my youth, I was a jazz musician. And although I played classical music, I've always had the urge to do my own thing with my band. I had a small band when I was younger. So as I mentioned, that I moved out to develop, to organize this band, and I founded it myself. It's a 14-piece swing jazz band. And we played for many, many Martin Luther King days. There are tapes on file in this organization that would show that. Of recent times, as you, if you know, musicians are very movable people. I mean, they're not permanent anywhere, really. So this year has been my worst year for my organization for several reasons. The rehearsal times is not convenient for anybody. But if I can find a day when all of them can be there, then that day is not available to me at this location. And we enjoy rehearsing here, but this year has been very difficult for me to keep the group together. And as I mentioned to someone that called me, that we're not fully staffed right now. Initially, I had at least four people that were a part of this band, and they're also playing in my band. I still have Joe that plays with me. But we have people from all over the simple spring. We had a couple of members even come from Virginia just for the opportunity to play in this band. And there are several other community bands I could be playing. I'm playing with University of Maryland, but I play for this city, and I don't mind playing for this city at all. But having the right musicians in place to do the music that I prefer to play is not always easy. And that's where I am right now. So I'm trying to rebuild it. And I appreciate the space, and I would like to have a little more consistent time for rehearsal, because I know you have a lot of other activities going on. I'm competing with a lot of other activities. I realize that. But that's, I don't have any, like, complaints. All I'm saying is I enjoy rehearsing here, and I would like to continue. Some people are looking for other venues to rehearse. People invite us to play in a lot of other places, but my bottom line is I would like to continue having an opportunity to rehearse at this location. And I'm willing to perform for this, for the city when I have the parts, the people in place, the resources, because we don't want to embarrass the city. We're going to play for the city. We want it to sound very constructive, play, be appreciated, because other people call you based on what they hear. We're open to other places, and we're invited to other places to play. Funded this band with about $2,500 with the swing music to play. And for this band, it came out of my pocket. No other, no donations from even the musicians. So I have, this is where my heart is. But we do get offered stipends in places we play, and people invite us with that, with that in mind. And this doesn't happen often, but it happens. We look for at least five or six major performances per year. The rest of it is rehearsals and small jobs that we do. All of us are in more than one group.
And if you were kind of up and running at the level that you'd like to be, how many rehearsals would you be wanting to do here?
Once a week.
Once a week?
Once a week. And sometime it would be once every two weeks, really, because. We do have some interruptions. For instance, I participated in the introductory musical presentations for the Olympics in China. So we didn't do anything here for almost three weeks. So we're inflexible. We have mostly senior members now, but we are open to young members. There are some things that I wouldn't mind exploring, given a time that someone that would be interested on the council to discuss relative to having joint musical presentations by the entire group that we did at once with just this concert and the jazz group for the opening of this recreational symphony.
And we split one of those king nights, too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, those nights also.
And there's another one of those.
Yeah, I think the, kind of the tension that's going on, you know, we'd love to be able to offer you as much of the facility as you need, as often as you need it. And the thing that kind of is pushing back the other way is wanting to make sure that as many people have an opportunity to have access to the facility for whatever it is that they want to be doing. And as we have more facilities to offer and more people know about it, then more people want access to it. And we just want to be sure that for the groups that we are kind of giving preferential treatment to, that it's not, you know, that it's, that we can justify it. And I think for me, one of the things that made a difference was knowing that the community band had been designated as the official city band. And in thinking about the issue of the filing cabinets, that that designation for me says, well, the filing cabinets need to be where you need them. How, you know, whatever the details are, however that gets worked out, that's not what we need to discuss here, but to just make sure that we're clear in our own minds as we say what the, what the policy is for your particular groups, what it is so that everybody's clear about it. Because I know we've, we've had multiple discussions about this, and we just want to make sure that we get it right and don't have to come back to it. back to it. And I guess, from my point of view, the band has a designation, you two don't?
An official designation?
Official designation.
No, no.
I don't think so. So, not that I'm saying that, you know, there isn't a long history and a lot of other things.
Exactly. The incorporation goes back to sixty-eight, you've been continuously operating since seventy-six, so there certainly is a long connection with the city.
So, it makes a certain amount of sense to me to say, you know, I think it's kind of a settled done deal with the band, that you've got the designation unless we were going to undesignate you, which I don't think anybody's going to do, that, you know, that you should, that the direction from the council should be, you get your rehearsal time that you need, and in a way that makes the most sense, that, you know, I guess the sense is that it's, there's the eleven, but it's almost like, you know, you get your whatever it is, forty-some, and just schedule them, and, you know, if we were, if we were going to want to try and free up Hefner on Monday nights, then we would have to do it by not having a community band. The other two groups, I don't think it's as clear-cut, it may end up getting to the same point, but I'd like to hear what my colleagues, how we want to deal with this, and I just don't have any thoughts.
I have a question.
So are each of your groups, can anyone who lives in Tacoma Park join the band or the singers, or?
Absolutely. And we are open, we're open to looking for members. We also, we recruit at the Folk Festival and other venues like that.
So one of the things for me is that, I think of recreation very broadly, right? So, to me, this is sort of a free recreational activity that the city helps to have occur, which we use many of our facilities for recreational activities. And sometimes when there are operators operating a class that charge for it, we charge them for the space, but when we operate an internal recreational activity, we don't charge ourselves for the space. So, that kind of puts a different, I don't know exactly how I think about it yet, but that puts a little bit of a lens on it for me. I mean, broadly, I'm definitely in the Bruce's camp that, I've already made my mind up about this related to the band coming in, that that's very clear to me. It was clear to me the last time we had this discussion, and I thought we gave clear direction about it, that the band should continue to be able to use the space, have their file cabinets there, and it should be able to be scheduled out for well into the future. And that's connected to the designation that they have. I'm open to figuring out for the other ones, but I think that the band to me is a slam dunk, and then the recreational aspect may get me to the other ones also.
Question, Mr. Epps. I gather from what you were saying, is that, that having a consistent access, reliable consistent access, would help you in getting your core group of your jazz band to cohere, in other words, to stick together. In other words, to put it in a negative sense, having an irregular place where time to need doesn't help.
Well, it helps. Anytime available time in a spot to rehearse, helps.
Yeah, but I mean, having it...
Even though it's irregular.
Yeah, so it's better to have it regular than irregular.
Oh, yes, it would be.
But better than having, it's better to have it irregular than not at all.
Exactly.
I just wanted to understand.
All means, all means. I do want to say, make this point, is that the band is open to people in Tacoma Park. Anyone, youngsters that want to come and learn how to play jazz and things like that. We have some, maybe a couple of members who'd be willing to even teach a course with some joint participation by the city, the county, the city to maybe support materials, some materials that may be needed for teaching. And I say that because it happened without a plan. A young gentleman came in and just was so interested in the drums, you know, and he, I think he's taking lessons someplace in the city. And my drummer, I just asked him to spend some time with him, spent about fifteen or twenty minutes with this kid, telling him about the drums and different things, and he keeps coming back, he's peeking in, and, you know, if we were rehearsing, we don't have time to do that. But we could explore something that, like that again, if we said we want joint participation, we could organize some effort like this to contribute that to the city. And a few other things I had down here that I thought might be good to show, this swing band is a major function in music, and it's one that's not going to die, and young people are interested in jazz, as well as other music. So, I thought, I say, this is a thing that could happen with some planning by our band in conjunction with the city, and to deal with materials needed, and any other things that might come up that's needed to make it function. I thought, when I wrote a paper into, to request participation in the Arts and Humanities Group, my basic idea was that some joint musical effort would come out of this Arts and Humanities, and that we could reach out through that process, but that didn't happen. But I'm saying, since I had to come tonight to talk about things, I wanted to say that, that some of these ideas I have would involve a joint participation by the city, that would contribute to the city and the youth that the city that's interested in developing in music. We have concert music and musical musicians in the band, as well as just pure jazz musicians. Some are top educated musicians, and some are lawyers, that had music as their love, like I was a so-called computer technology man, but music was my first love, and I had formal education in music. So all of them are well-educated musicians and are professional, and they play other places, they don't just play the music, they travel and all, so. If, and when it's interesting, I will pursue this exploration of establishing some effort that you could look at as a direct contribution to the city youth, as far as volunteerism is concerned.
Yeah, I like the sounds of that.
Yeah, so do I. I think anything that we can do to help the kids in this community, I mean, if you've got this kind of talent available, that's a, that's a good thing.
Dave?
Hi, Carol.
Hi, Dave.
I sang with the singers for a couple of years, some years back, so I, it was a very, a very nice time.
Now you're singing a different tune.
Now I'm singing a different tune, is exactly right. And I currently teach kids at Piney Branch Elementary, I teach guitar in the mornings for the PTA, for the Little Guitar Club. So I'm well aware of the joy that you get as a teacher, and also, I hope the benefit that kids get when they, when they're exposed to music at an early age, and certainly at an older age, that it's a joy. It's also work, it's also hard work, and a challenge. And, and I was very interested to hear, Mr. Epps, that you had, you have some of your comments about the Arts and Humanities Council. And we have had different conversations, I had a lengthy conversation on the way up to Rocky Gap with Councilmember Clay, who's not with us at this moment, about how to use the auditorium once it's finished. And I'm a, I like the idea of delegating, we can't decide exactly who's going to, who's going to rehearse where and when, and we can't decide here who's going to perform where and when. We need help in doing that, making those decisions. It sounds like you haven't had a great deal of success with our Recreation Department, who has their own concerns. I, I think, like you, Mr. Epps, would like to see some entity that could handle the musical end of things, and how, where and when rehearsals are, take place, and where and when performances take place. The Tacoma Park Band is, it may or may, I know it's the official band, but it also has the Tacoma Park name, so you're by rights our emissary into the broader world. You're the Tacoma Park Band, so when somebody hears you, they go to hear you, they know they're listening to the Tacoma Park Band. So we're getting free PR out there in the wider world, and the more you play out there in the wider world, the better it is for us.
Big sign.
And a big sign is good. And the same goes for the Tacoma Park Singers. When you're out there at the nursing homes and what have you, you're representing us, and I certainly hope that you're continuing to do such a great job as you did when I was with you, in making that, being an emissary for the city. I don't know how you present yourself, Mr. Epps, when you're out there. I like the idea of your thinking of connecting with kids. So, I guess I don't have much to say or add as far as the specifics of where and when you can rehearse. I don't think that's my decision. Or where and when you play. I would like to see us go with, I'd like to see us on the council encourage somebody to, to help in making these decisions, whether it's rec, or whether it's the future coordinator for our auditorium, or however we're going to, because we're going to have a flood, we hope, a flood of people who want to use the auditorium once it's done. So, having said all of that, I support your, I'm uncomfortable, I guess I'm uncomfortable saying who can play and rehearse where and when. I wish that somebody was taking this in hand, and I'm distressed that, that rec or whoever else is doing scheduling, that we can't seem to get it right.
If I may, Councilmember Robinson, this was a policy that was set by the council in 2005, it was not the policy of the Recreation Department, in terms of how these groups reserve space.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not really trying to pick on rec. I'm, what I'm saying is, it's frustrating to me to have you here and to hear that we can't get straight what's needed for rec, for both rehearsal and performance.
And I think that gets back to my earlier comment about the tension of, you know, groups who have always been here doing things, and then wanting to open it up to other groups, and that causes the difficulty in kind of keeping access for those who have always had it, yet opening up access for new opportunities for people who haven't had it with limited resources.
Right.
And coming up with the best policy for doing that, and trying to make everybody happy. And my thought up here was, well, maybe the solution is to give the designation to the other two groups that the band already has, and then the little discussion was, yeah, and then everybody's going to ask for the designation. And then what do we do? So, Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank you all for coming here at this late hour, and hopefully not too much later. I think the real issue on the table, from the way I see it, is kind of the use of our recreational facility here in the city, and to what degree it is community-oriented, and to what degree it is less community-oriented, and to some degree even commercially-oriented. I know the group there that has reserved locked-door storage is a commercial enterprise, where, you know, you obviously are a group of community-oriented residents that are looking for space. And so I think the guidance that we can give to the Recreation Department of the Council maybe is clear direction on what we feel is the appropriate mix or priority of community organizations over revenue-generating or business organizations. And that's a difficult struggle we've, we've had in the past, and haven't really, I think, reached a clear enough guidance that, that the councils, councils over time, have been happy with. You know, I certainly, at this point, agree that the community band, you know, should continue to get the rehearsal space, and I would support the designation of the other two organizations as whatever the...
The official...
Yeah. Official...
And I guess...
Singers and jazz.
If I can just expand just a little bit on that thought, what, and what struck me was Mr. Epps saying about coming up with some collaboration with the city for some teaching opportunities, and that I think it's, it's that kind of thinking that led me to think, well, let's just, you know, make the designation, and it's almost like, maybe we could do something that said, you know, part of the designation is an expectation that that type of stuff will happen, and if, and if the singers can, you know, come up with some similar ideas for opportunities for opening up to young folks to join, maybe the band as well. It seems like that's, that's a kind of a partnership that makes it really easy for us to encourage kind of heightened status, in terms of access to the facility.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should think carefully about what, who, what's that criteria under which someone gets that designation, and what that entitles them to, and what that means their responsibility to the city is, because, you know, someone else could come along and say, like, I want to start the Tacoma Park Rock Band, and someone else could say, I want to have like the Chamber Singers, and, you know, someone else could be the acapella group, right? Like, maybe Tacoma Singers is the acapella group. So, so I just, yeah, I think that there needs to be some set of, that doesn't need to stop us exactly from saying, yes, we're going to designate these three and solve this issue now, but I do think we need to kind of formalize what, why someone would get that designation.
Yeah, maybe, maybe what I would propose is, as a, as a way to go forward from here, we know that the band already has a designation, maybe we want to consider for the other two, and in the meantime, say that we'll, we'll, we'll kind of extend the courtesy of the same access that we think the band should have, in terms of just saying, you need your nights, schedule them. Our understanding is that that's once a week, and let you all set that up, and encourage you to work with the city to try and come up with a way that might, we might formalize that, and kind of build in a few expectations for how the relationship might kind of work both ways? Yes?
Yes, Mayor Williams. Two questions. One comes to, access to rehearsal, we need a piano. Is the auditorium the only place that would have a piano in which we could rehearse?
Do we have a piano at this point? A working piano?
It doesn't work, well.
Well, and I would encourage the city to invest in a good, good instrument that would be available to groups performing, but...
I think, I think the trouble is things like, there was a piano out there, and somebody went in and snapped all of it.
Yeah, true.
Well, there had been a small, an upright in there, but, and I know there had been a question about whether, you know, this rehearsal pause, whether, whether the auditorium would be available for rehearsals, or whether now the auditorium was going to be a different designated area. So, we would need space with a piano.
And we haven't figured that out yet, we haven't had that discussion. My, my sense, without having had the discussion, is that there might be some limited opportunities for rehearsals in the auditorium, but limited.
Right. And then I just wanted to clarify, too, that we've always had a very good relationship with the Recreation Department, and in terms of helping us with programs and performance space, but when the policy was enacted in 2005, I was told that they, that their programs took priority for any of the spaces before the singers did, and so that I would then, you know, have to see what their schedule was before I could use the buildings, and then it was on this week to week, and because that, you know, I was always kind of waiting to find out if they're available, was why we went this other route, so.
I think your understanding from the council direction at that time was correct. Obviously, there's a number of city boards and commissions that have regular meetings, so they obviously have places for their meetings, their hearings, so those were the first things put on the calendars, and were what we do for city council meetings. And then there was a lot of discussion about scheduling recreation programs. Beyond that, the eleven free rentals that were granted to these three groups, and the requirement that you call week in advance was also something that was set by the council. I guess in terms of the auditorium, specifically to your question, as noted on the cover sheet, I think it's staff's recommendation that that be exempted currently from being booked, just because there's so much uncertainty about... just because there's so much uncertainty about how that space will be used. And I think that's a future discussion that we need to have with the council.
Right.
And there is no decent piano at this point in the building. You're correct.
What about the one in the atrium?
In the atrium? It's in actual pretty bad shape. And I would say we've had a lot of internal discussions recently because we have people from the public who come up and play during the day. And with the acoustics in that space, I know that's probably not when you all are planning to practice, but it's virtually impossible to work or to have conversations on the phone. We've actually been having some discussions about restoring the lock on that because it's just impossible to answer phones or anything else if you're in that area.
And as far, just as far as a piano, my thought is that there may be people who are, who have pianos who are looking to get rid of them. I know I was in that position about 10 years ago, and I gave away a very nice piano for $60 if they would come move it. So there are opportunities. Down here, then we can wrap this up.
Yeah. I guess I'm reluctant to, I'm reluctant to get into the business of our scheduling things, I'll reiterate. And I'm reluctant to get into the business of our designating certain bands as official bands. I think it's, I'm with Josh on that. You could have Mission Creek, and everybody wants to, you know, the Tacoma Park this and the Tacoma Park that. So I'd prefer that you guys put your heads together and come up with something like the Arts and Humanities Commission, or some entity or grouping of your own selves that can try to determine what best suits you and then negotiate with us in some way or another, with our city manager and with us in some way. I don't see an easy way out of this. I see that you have to, you have to step back, step back, organize, and come back as a kind of a unified voice to get what you want.
Can I make a comment? I disagree. The point I want to make is that I don't have tremendous criticisms for, the Record Center's been very nice to me. I'm not always able to get the night I want, and, you know, I can't do all that, but they've been very nice in getting me. My only thing is, is having a place to rehearse if the city was still willing to allow me to do it. These other things I mentioned, I'm willing to explore with some representative from the city organization, Recreation City Organization, as far as having a showcase for youth talent in Tacoma Park, things like that. That would have to come out of joint participation with your organization. We can't, I can't do that on my own.
Well, we have an Arts and Humanities Commission, as you mentioned, that kind of stands on its own to organize artistic displays in the city. They reach out to all of the artists that they can in our community.
Okay.
And try to figure out how they're gonna share our limited resources.
I see.
And that, and we have, we have a great deal of interest in musical, both rehearsal and performance. You're not the only ones who want to perform and rehearse. And, you know, there are, I'm sure, others, particularly when the auditorium comes into play. We can't, we can't do this scheduling up here. I think it's a mistake for us to try to do scheduling and say, well, you can have 11 rehearsals and you can have 12 rehearsals. I mean, come on, we can't do that. So I just think this is, I'm frustrated, as you can tell.
Mr. Epps, did you say that you had reached out to the Arts and Humanities Commission?
I remember that, when they started, asking to be a member. And I never got a positive or negative response. I do get some correspondence now. I think someone looked back and saw my name. They send me an email now and then, let me know what's going on.
Okay, so you could, you could reach out to them again with these ideas?
Yeah, this is the type thing. If there are, if you have a facility that's already doing this, then...
And I think it's also, I think it's also an opportunity to talk with the Recreation Manager and see if they're interested in putting together a program with you.
Right. So I'm willing to do, to make the recommendation or help in the discussion of it or help in the planning, that type thing. And if they have, if they're gonna have an element that's interested in jazz music, I would certainly want to be active at that level.
I would like to suggest that a way to put this to bed is that we go ahead and take the actions that we've talked about tonight of community band rehearsal time being authorized and supported by the council. And I would also propose that the Tacoma Park Singers and the Jazz Band also be granted the rehearsal time. And we could talk about whether or not designate them with any special significance at another time.
What I'm hearing here from each of you, and thank you for your help on this, is really more of the beginning of a discussion on a complicated issue that involves space utilization. And we've got the addition now of converting an auditorium into a performance space. And as Ms. Matthews said, we're not even sure how that space is going to be allocated over time. At the same time, I mean, it's, and we have competing uses and different levels of that. And it seems to me it's a really complicated, what you're coming up with here is touching on a complicated situation. We don't have the answers to that tonight. I don't see how we can be making any decisions tonight. What I would prefer, since we have a Recreation Committee, which is a statutory committee of this board, is to ask them to meet with you and coordination with other, with the staff, the Recreation Department, the City Managers' Office, whoever else needs to be there to, where all these things can be brought to bear, you know, the, because we're, current policy in place that was adopted in '05 has something to do with how many rentals per year, and then after that, fees should be paid. And what you guys need is a policy that provides consistency and predictability. And some of that time you have that, and some of the time you don't. I just think this is more of a beginning of a discussion than the end of a discussion on policy. Maybe we even should go so far and imitate our dear President Obama to appoint a music czar. But aside from that, I just think that this whole element of music can be a critical part of our recreation program in the city. And I think that that really bears more investigation as to how do we can optimize this using your groups as well as other musical groups to benefit the community, not just in terms of sheer entertainment, but in other ways, like Mayor Williams has been talking about tonight. I just, that's where I'm coming out on this.
I'm beginning to sense that we're all over the lot up here. And that our proposed solutions are from the point of view of people who want to make policy and people who think in terms of meetings and bureaucracies. And you're all sitting out there going, we just want to play the music and have the space to do this. Don't make us go to more meetings. Don't make us talk to people.
Well...
And I'm not sure what our best answer is tonight. And we got to do something to end this section of the meeting. And so I think I'll propose for our action from this meeting that it sounds like the best course of action is to say, you all are still the official band, you all aren't official anything, that you've, you have historic status, you've been granted special status already in terms of rehearsal access. And if we kind of expand that and say, all three groups, you get your rehearsal access that you need for the year, it's not just the 11, that we do that for now, no special status on anybody. We'd like to encourage you to get together and work at some of the things that we've been talking about. We may try and put you together with the Recreation Committee, the Arts and Humanities Council, the Arts and Humanities Commission, Recreation Department, to figure out other opportunities to coordinate and enhance the opportunities that we might be able to make available in the city for music in particular. And call it quits at that for tonight.
I would support that. Me, too.
Yes?
Just have a question. I think I'm very clear on the band because you have a regular facility that you prefer to use and have a night. The singers, obviously, would be an entire new addition to trying to block out dates. And Mr. Epps has been bounced around, as I understand it, between Thursday and Friday. Are, for the singers and for the swing band, are they to pick whatever night or are we to basically say that?
Work with them.
Huh?
Can we say work with them?
Right, I mean, I...
They don't get to say which night.
Okay, and that's what I'm just trying to be clear.
I don't think.
On what we should do.
But, you know, try and accommodate what they need, but...
What I do think it should be, what I do here is a consistent...
Right. Which may require us to deviate from what their preferred date is. And obviously, I think the singers is particularly problematic because of the need for a piano, which...
Well, exactly. Right. If we don't have that, then, you know, we...
It sounds like what we need to do is publicize the need for a piano.
Yeah.
And then we get back to the story, you know, the auto store?
Yeah. And is that at Heffner? And does that take more space? I don't know. It's, and it's not anything we're gonna solve tonight, but if we, does that give you...
What I will do is check with, basically check with the Recreation Department to see which dates are blocked out for city boards and commissions and other rentals. And then we'll just see kind of what the best time is that can be consistent. I do think, once again, I think it's a different issue for the singers. And I would encourage the council to not make any commitment of the auditorium space until you have a broader discussion about that.
We're not doing that.
So I just want to make clear, though, for the band, because this is in my mind how this whole discussion started, that you have clear direction that they...
Yes. It's Monday nights in Heffner.
Monday nights at Heffner. And it's scheduled for the entire year, obviously, or if they want to do it quarterly or whatever, that they don't have to check in every week.
I think they have a meeting date. I think the only issue is I would be, I would be very opposed to giving any outside party a key to a city facility. But I think we, obviously, there have been some issues in terms of the remote access, and we'll talk to IT about that. But I would prefer not to have keys floating around out there.
Who has what card?
I thought at one time we could talk. I thought at one time we were, we had a fob or something.
Yeah, but that was out.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Councilmembers can't even get that, so don't be...
But that's the advantage of the technology of the key card, right? That it only works at certain times.
Right. Hopefully, your key will only open Heffner on Monday nights during that time window. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And we will take a short break and come back for our final two items. We won't make you stay here much longer.
I'm giving you an email system. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
It's not just getting the piano. It's...
The reason I'm working this year is...
Oh, reason of working this year.[201.12]
...background of Belle. She started here in the 50s and has volunteered, as a paid person and as a volunteer over many different organizations. She was involved with the Sister City. As a matter of fact, I believe in talking with her one time, her daughter Dolores actually went down to Jacquey Brazil and was down there for a while as an exchange program for the Sister City. She used up at the Sister City building that they used to have for selling goods and raising money for it. That's up where Tacoma Junction's at now. She used to run that. She helped start the house and garden tour. Been involved in the fireworks and the parade since the 50s. So, I think you said it right. She, from 19, from the mid 50s up till the day she died, which was just over a year ago, she was involved in Tacoma Park. And she loved the children of Tacoma Park. That's the main thing I can remember is she always wanted to make sure that the kids had a place to go, something to do. So I think Jacquey Park with the way the park is used is a good place for her to have her name because it's used by the kids of Tacoma Park.
I'm Diana Kahn. As president of Historic Tacoma, I'm upcoming also to bring Historic Tacoma support to this idea. I did an article on Jacquey Park and why it had that name in 2006 and was in touch with two of the Brazilians, one living in Brazil and one who is now actually living in the US. And they both told me that Belle was their main connection, even 20, 30 years later. And so I don't think there would be objection from them if Belle would be honored by taking over the name of Jacquey Park. So I just, it seems that all of the things she did are connected in many ways to the park. So it seems an appropriate venue.
And it's good to hear the degree of support for this change. And I agree, it would be an honor to change the name of the park and to honor Belle. Do you have something else?
One additional caveat, I would like to see some sign explanation at the park that would explain why it was changed from Jacquey to Belle Ziegler.
You're going the same place I was about to go.
And, you know, and so that we can tie the whole thing up very neatly and keep some of these concepts, these events alive for people that come along later.
Yeah, because we don't want to lose the history and have everybody thinking like, you know, the history of Tacoma Park started 20 years ago. That we don't want to lose the Jacquey connection. And so I think we do need to have a sign that explains that. If there's an appropriate place to put the sign, that, you know, whether it's just a sign that explains it or whether it's something that designates a particular thing. I know that there's the signs there also honoring Walt Penny and Marty Moskowitz. And I think we need to not lose our history in that way and to also look for opportunities to make that history much more available to people so that they do understand where things came from and how they've evolved over time. And I've had a lot of thoughts about how that could happen more in this building, just, you know, more things to try and lump onto this building. But ways that we can put up signage or displays or exhibits or whatever that explain these connections. And I like the connection with Belle, with Jacquey and with the Sister City designation. And at times, I've wanted to try and revive a Sister City relationship, whether with Jacquey or with somebody else. There have been people who've come and talked about that. The program is still very much alive. So I think if we keep that connection as well, just to that program, that it's helpful so that we don't lose that completely and somebody wants to bring it back and they don't even know that we had that connection in the past. So I think it would be a real nice thing to do to make that change, yet not lose Jacquey, not use, not lose, you know, the other names that that park has had so that people see the things evolve over time. And I'd also like to acknowledge that Belle's son Doug is here and we really appreciate you being here as well. You want to say something?
I didn't initially, I thought of a couple of things.
Sure, come on up.
I think my mother would approve of keeping the connection with Jacquey. One of the early exchange students from Jacquey, my mind's blank, Henry Zimbrunas, came back here after his time as an exchange student, went home. And he started working over at the Adventist Hospital. He's still there. He's got his medical degree. He's planning to retire in a couple of years and go home and open a clinic back near Jacquey. So if you wanted to reopen the connection, he is the one to talk to probably for contacts there. You're right, my sister was an exchange student. She has a gift for languages. She was there for nine months and came back speaking fluent Portuguese, and still does. She liked the idea that people were thinking of her mother. And you said one other thing, I'm trying to recall. Something I was going to say about it.
Something about the plaque or...
Oh, Walt Penny. Walt Penny was a good friend of my sister. They, and several other people, shared a house over on Buffalo Avenue, just a block away, for a number of years. So she would be pleased that he's getting some consideration and remembrance also.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'm really glad to see this come before us. And I fully support renaming of Jacquey Park in honor of Belle Ziegler. Having watched her, heard about her history, but watched her work here in the city, having an opportunity to work with her on a couple of things through the years. She was certainly someone who should be remembered, not just because of the work that she did, but the love that she had for Tacoma Park, the way that she reached out to the young people in the city and brought them into all the different programs that were available, actually working with not just young children, but also the adults to, you know, sit down and just talk with them, find out what was their passion, and then trying to motivate them and encourage them and facilitate their developing that passion within the realm of the city recreation department when she was a director of the recreation department, but also as the real leader through the years of the Independence Day Committee. She would, again, find people who had an interest and show them how they could develop that interest within the volunteer work within the city. She's, she was a fantastic woman and someone that we all looked up to at the time. And this renaming of the park in her honor will keep her in the minds, not only of the people who knew her, but also of future generations. So I fully support.
Hi. I also support this. I'm assuming this is a city park, that we own this park. Am I right?
Yes.
I loved working with Belle on the floats in the Fourth of July Parade, got to know her through that. I have two little issues here that don't really relate to this. One, I mean, they do relate to it. One is that I just want to point out that Park and Planning, when they own a park, makes it very difficult to name a park after a person. They want it named after a place. And there's a little, a funny little, funny little incident that's happened in my ward on West Morland Avenue. There's a park there which includes the gazebo and the playlot and a large open space just below the gazebo. And it's been designated by Park and Planning as Tacoma Urban Park. That's what they call it, Tacoma Urban Park. I guess they feel that Tacoma Park is an urban area. And they just put up a new sign there. And they forgot part of the, part of the name of their own park. And so the sign at Tacoma Urban Park is now Tacoma Park. And so I'm endeavoring to try to get them first to rename it Tacoma Urban Park. But better still, to rename it after somebody. And there's a discussion going on in the wacko neighborhood there to determine which name they want to, they would like to see it. And so we're going to have to go before the Park and Planning Commission. And we're going to, I'm going to have to argue, they're going to have to argue why such and such a person, it may be Gilbert, it may be Gilbert Park, why that person has any importance in our town. And it's going to be a big messy situation. So I'm glad to see this renaming coming before us because I think that we might be a little warmer and fuzzier than Park and Planning would be. And the second thing I want to mention is that I'm reading here on page two, Ordinance 1900, which is when Jacquey Park was first created in our packet. And it says just above that that Councilmember, Councilman Guebe, who was the vice chairman, reported about Jacquey Park, that it was, that it's recommending renaming the former name with Washington Park, Jacquey Park, in honor of the Tacoma Park Sister City Jacquey Bahia Brazil, and that would best suit their needs. And then later, at the very last sentence, the second to last sentence, it says, pointed out that about two and a half years ago, Jacquey had built and named a subdivision of their city, Tacoma Park. So my question is, what's up down there in Tacoma Park? How's it, how's it going down there in Tacoma Park? Do we have any way to find out what it's like in Tacoma Park, Brazil, right now?
And has Park and Planning renamed that?
Yeah, yeah, right. Does any, do we still have any connection? And could we get a little snapshot with a cellphone?
Henry could probably tell you. Henry Zimbrunas could probably tell you.
Might be interesting, just for another piece of the history of this process.
I don't think he, I mentioned it, but he also approves of the renaming.
Good. Anyway.
I'm totally supportive of this. I think as part of the process, it might be a good idea. I know this will come before us for an official vote probably, right? So, but it might be a good idea to put up, to post a sign in the park that this is happening so that, you know, as, you know, open government, that residents who surround the park understand that this is happening and they want to make, come and make a public comment about the name.
Absolutely.
That the name change, that, you know, whenever our vote's going to be, that that be posted.
Probably would be a good idea to, I don't know, something in the newsletter and posted in the park, with the newsletter article posted so that people can read the information or, you know, put the information together and laminate it, put it up there so that it's not just, we're going to consider renaming the park and they don't know why. So I think, you know, it's not like we're under the gun on timing and that we have to do it next week. So we have the opportunity to put that together and do the renaming in the spring right before everything gets going. We don't want to be out there trying to put up a sign in frozen ground right now anyway.
Mayor, I did want to voice support for your suggestion that we have plaques in various locations in the city to explain why certain names were given. And there's several I can think of. And one that comes to mind certainly is Lee Jordan Field. I think as the community has aged and community members have passed on...
They don't know who Mr. Lee is.
Yeah, they're not sure who Mr. Lee is or what he did or why he deserved the honor of having a field named after him. So...
Point on that territory. Ted Kowalik, when he was the city planner, did have a plaque made up of Mr. Lee that was at one point going to go onto the shed. I think, I don't know, don't know what happened, but I remember seeing the plaque many years ago that had a description of why the field was named.
Now we need a plaque to tell us where the plaques are.
Okay, thank you.
And then it can tell us where all those maps are of the city that I want to put up here.
That's why we need a renovation of Public Works because then they'd know where this is.
And that, the agreement between us and Metro, aren't we looking for that?
Yeah, yeah. And also the designation for the community school.
Oh, yeah, that's right. What time is it?
So it sounds like we have agreement. We're going to go forward on this. And maybe there could be a little joint effort to put together whatever we should have for the information for what goes up for the neighborhood to see and then heading toward what should go on a plaque, both to explain Jacquey and Belle Ziegler. And I don't know if I could leave it up to maybe you folks at the table to kind of decide who among you or who among you and others should do that and coordinate with the city clerk. And we'll aim for a process that gets the word out to the neighborhood, gets the action on our agenda, and makes it so that we can do a name change in coordination with when Public Works, if we still have a Parks Division in Public Works, puts the, puts the, changes the, whatever is needed to be changed in the park as they start going in in the spring to clean up. Does that make sense? Which would be what, March, April? So we just kind of work toward that deadline of, let's say, March. Makes sense?
Doug has a question for you.
Yes.
Nobody's mentioned what name you intend to use for the park.
Is it Belle Park or Ziegler Park or Belle Ziegler Park?
Belle Ziegler Park.
I was assuming Belle Ziegler Park.
Belle Ziegler, Children's Park, what?
Belle Ziegler Park.
Belle Ziegler Park.
Okay.
I'm thinking Belle Ziegler Urban Park.
Or we could do it like they name the airports. BWI Thurgood Marshall International Airport? Or National Airport and we don't mention the rest of it?
Or City Hall Community Center, San Abbott's.
Yeah, yeah. Let's keep this one simple. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Jesse, you and Barb have everything you need on that?
No.
Okay.
You're going to stay with us now for the rest of the day?
Our final item is a discussion of the community center banner policy. And I wanted to say that when I, when I read the packet, I thought, oh, it's not just on the community center, it's other places too. We shouldn't feel that we need to limit ourselves to touching at the community center. And it's, I wanted to talk about this because I feel like we've, we've gone from having the building that used to be here with a nice brick monument sign out front that occasionally had letters fall and therefore gave some odd messages to the people who were driving by. And I think at one point, at least one, maybe two different people drove into it. And that may be why it eventually went down prior to needing to come down for the renovation and expansion of this building. And it would have disappeared into the moat. And in fact, when the moat was being constructed, somebody did try to drive into the moat and kind of hung over the edge, if you remember.
That's why those planters are there.
Yes, yes. And so we've gone from having as, not as nice a building as we have now with a really nice monument sign, to having a much nicer building with what I consider to be, in the Tacoma Park tradition, tacky banners hanging from the railing. And I just don't think we want to continue to go there. And it's, it's good to be able to put up banners in some places. I think when they do get put up, they need to be put up in such a way that they don't look like they're always drooping. There may be some locations that take banners very well. And I know that some have been put up at the junction when the city has mulch for sale in the spring. I know that we put some up over at Piney Branch in Philadelphia. There, and I know either we or others in the past have put signs up across the roads and that those can announce festivals. Montgomery County does that in Silver Spring on a number of occasions, on Georgia Avenue. So banners have a place. I like banners. I just don't like them draped over the railing, giving what I don't think is a very good message about what's going on here. And I think if the solution is some kind of electronic sign that is well done, that could fill the bill very well.
Kind of like CBS has?
No.
Just thought I'd check.
I've actually seen some fairly decent electronic LED signs that can fill the bill. And I think that in terms of thinking about money, banners cost money. And those are, you know, costs that go into doing things. And if we were to find a way to do some kind of a electronic sign, a monument sign, I wouldn't be the one to tell somebody, you know, exactly where to put it or how big it should be or all those things. But I think I've seen decent looking ones. And I would like to be able to hit us in that direction and come up with something that will get us there, that will kind of deal with the current situation that we would need to continue to deal with until we were to come up with that, but to have a plan to get there and a way to make sure that any banners that go up in the meantime don't detract from presentation of who we want to be or who we think we are. And I see hands flying up over here.
This is a scope question before we start. I just want to make sure I understand tonight's discussion. So it's talking not just about banners here at the community center, but banners at other city buildings?
I don't, I don't want to just limit it to here if we feel that we can come up with something that will address some other needs as well. If we feel that we just can limit the scope to here tonight because that's all we can do tonight, okay. But I don't want to just say that it, start out by saying it's limited, don't we?
And then it's also the possibility of an electronic sign here and also...
Or if there's some other solution, that we'll do it.
And also reopening the previous council decision banning banners over roadways?
I'm not sure. Was that our decision?
I believe it is, yes.
I don't know.
Okay. So we can talk about banners over roadways.
I brought it up.
Okay.
Yeah, Josh.
So I would be a fan of not having the banners on the front of the community center at the Piney Branch Philadelphia location or at the junction. Instead, what I would put in place of it, which is something I think Colleen has mentioned before, and I've seen in at least one community in Cape Cod, is basically two posts. You can make them out of metal or wood that have grooves in them. And you tell people who want to post a banner, whether it's the library book sale group, or it's us doing our own mulch sale sign, or whatever, here's the size of the two, I mean, the piece of plywood that you can advertise on. They produce the sign on the piece of plywood and you just slide it into the fixture, into the posts. It's very nice because you can put, you can construct it. So there's a little lock on the top even, so not anyone can just come along and put it. And it's pretty easy for someone to take in and out. It's inexpensive. It still allows for individual groups to have flexibility in kind of what they paint on the sign or have produced onto the placard. It looks classy and nice and doesn't cost a lot of money and easy to change. And, you know, the city can have their, like they have the mulch banner, which comes up every year. That's probably 15 years old. They can have the, that placard. And I'm not a big fan of the, I'd be curious to see the LED sign you've seen that looks good because it always, whenever I see them, it always strikes me as sort of Ocean City kind of style. And doesn't, I don't think...
The one I saw that I liked was Quince Orchard High School.
Have to go by and see that.
Yeah, have to go, have to see that. It's Route 28. And I don't remember where the cross street is there. Quince Orchard and Darntstown Road is probably what it is.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'll speak in favor of those banners.
How dare you?
I know. I like the banners because I think they look a little, they attract your attention. And if they're tastefully done, you know, with a simple message, I think they're very readable. I find the electronicy signs, I, you know, the first few times I look at them and then I don't see them anymore. I like the fact that, you know, it might blow in the breeze a little bit. I also don't like the ones on the railing though. So having some kind of place to put the signs, as Josh was outlining, would appeal to me more. But I'm not averse to having some of the wavy banner type things. I think there are occasions when they look...
I'm not averse to wavy banners in some locations either, but I don't think they look good tied to the railing or hung to the building.
Hung to the building, I don't mind. Those, some of them I think are okay. But the ones on the railing, I agree, didn't like the ones on the railing. But I wouldn't be opposed to some fixed sign thing like Colleen and Josh were talking about.
And I'm not opposed to those either. I'm just looking for solutions.
I would say, since everybody seemingly has a need to interject their aesthetic opinions about this, no...
We've got to do aesthetics once in a while.
None of which is based on any common sense.
But you want it to be different?
No, no, no. Mine's just going to be as irrational and as emotional as the rest of you.
Thank you.
Is that I am basically opposed to high tech and more in favor of low tech solutions to this, which is to say, I like Josh's idea, I like Councilman Snapper's suggestion, and I do not like the mayor's proposal for an electronic sign. To me, that represents the antithesis of what we spent an awful lot of money on, on the facade of this building to make it look historic, when in fact it's not. I just think, I'm willing to be persuaded, however.
And, and I'm, and I'm not pushing the electronic sign as the answer. I was pushing it as one possibility. I'm perfectly happy to get behind Councilmember Wright's, Councilmember Clay's idea. I had forgotten about that one, but I think that's a good idea as well. I lived on Cape Cod and I saw quarter boards everywhere. They tended to be signs for businesses. I don't remember as many for community events, but I do remember some. I have no objection to that.
I think that the, when you consider all, that every high school, every church...
So don't set me up as your straw man.
Oh, I want it. Is that there is what, which Councilman Snapper was saying is that churches have these electronic signs, high schools have them, middle schools have them. And after a while, they don't get noticed. They just become one more part of the landscape and not a very pleasant part of it. But they're necessary for schools and churches. It's what works because they constantly have to be updated. So I prefer the low tech solution overall.
And I'll just have to say, I just remembered that I created one of those signs that Councilmember Wright is talking about. We actually came up with a name for a house that we owned. And I made one of those signs and put it on the house. I made the wooden sign, painted it myself, put a finish on it. I still have it.
There you go. People are going to hire you to make the signs.
I will say, the sign I saw was bigger than the traditional quarter board.
Right, right.
So that people, you know, it's banner sign.
It was more rectangular.
I, you know, since our newest council member has suggested we all voice our opinions here, I will voice mine. I, first of all, electronic sign, I think it's interesting because you could vary it, but it's, I don't feel it's in, in, I think it would contrast with the community center.
Can I take the electronic sign off the table?
Yeah.
Let's not beat that one anymore.
Okay. So we've made one success. All right. Let's move to these billboards that we've talked about, stationary billboards. I think regardless of the size, that... I think regardless of the size, that they may have some benefit, but I think, again, when I'm thinking of community and, and kind of the, the feel of what looks good here and fits here, I, I like the banners. I think they provide a great deal of flexibility. I think we maybe, although I haven't seen anybody really abuse it size wise, we might want to set some size limitations on them. You know, I think the, the location on the railing facing the intersection seems to work pretty good. And I'm not sure that, I don't find it a problem that it blocks the view of the traffic looking at the green monster that we have, the generator down in the, in the pit. So I kind of like the banners there. And again, there would have to be some standards that the city manager can set on, you know, duration for hanging banners there or frequency of any one organization hanging.
Which I think she kind of does now.
Yeah, and, and there may be some locations, whether it be Tacoma Junction or the corner of Philadelphian and Piney Branch Road where, you know, more permanent structure to, to put banners on would be more appropriate. But I'm concerned about, you know, with a solid wood one, whether it looks too billboardish.
I think, I think the size that Councilmember Wright was proposing, the ones I remember tended to be about, I don't know, I'll say no more than three feet wide and two feet high, probably smaller than that.
It's probably kind of hard to read that though when you're driving by in a car.
The one I saw was, was similar to the size of some of the banners that we have. So it's bigger than, a little bigger than that, like four by three or four by, yeah, something like that.
Well, I, I think I'll be pragmatic and rational with a lot of common sense in this, at this point, because I think that's what we're need. You know, there's been a lot of emotionality.
So you're trying out a new role.
I guess, I'm thinking about production. The good thing about an electronic sign is that you can reprogram it anytime you like. So from some central place you go so and so, this is happening Friday and this is happening Saturday and then it's done. Whereas with a banner, somebody has to go to signs or, signs by tomorrow, spend 50 bucks for the banner and, and then they have the computerized cutting, character cutting thing which puts it on the thing. So every time someone wants to publicize something, it's gonna cost them $50. So I, I question whether...
It was 50, 30 years ago.
Yeah, maybe it's 150, whatever. So, does this mean we're, we're restricting the voice to those who can afford a $250 banner?
I mean, this is a First Amendment issue for you?
I think it is, yeah, yeah. I, I guess I'm, I'm a little unclear on who gets to put a banner and under what circumstances.
Maybe the city manager would like to see what the current policy is.
We have used banners to publicize our own events, things such as International Walk of School Day, Arbor Day. We have allowed other uses to be very, very limited, has been my practice. So it would be things such as the Friends of the Library Book Sale, the Folk Festival. The House of Garden Tour has not. I, I don't recall using the, in front of the community center, they have had, I think, a sign in the past at Piney Branch Philadelphia. So it's not just come, anybody can just come and basically hang a banner on the city rail and that's not what we've allowed.
And do you have any sense of what they cost?
Banners? I think the one that, Terry, I know just did one for the Piney Branch, I'll mean for the pool, I don't know which he will spend, but I think most fairly decent sized banners are probably in the range of $500, $600.
They range from, yeah, 200 on up.
Yeah.
Wow.
We got one small one for the, for the fence in front of the community center and another large one...
You mean the rail in front of the...
The railing, yes. And then another large one for on top of the Piney Branch Elementary School. And the two banners together cost $635.
Yeah, this is, this is expensive. I mean, I'm kind of with Josh and either go high tech and get the darn some, you know, paint it like, so it looks like wood but have it actually be electronic or, or do something in Josh's frame where you can come and paint it yourself as long as you know the dimensions of the, of the sheet of plywood and slap it, slap her in there if somebody wants to do it cheaper than going to the banner place. I don't know if we're gonna come to a conclusion on this one. I guess I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to cut out, as Brett says, I, I don't think we should restrict banner placement to those who have $500 to spend. That, that's a concern to me.
That's what I like about the solution I've seen is that if you give the people the parameters, they can spend a lot and have like an artist do it or a sign company make the thing for them, or they can paint the sign themselves.
And those would be for kind of all locations or some locations?
No, I think there's basically three locations where you put banners now. There, it's at Philadelphian and Piney Branch. It's at the city lot in the Junction there and that's the little place where the picket fence is in front of that and in front of the community center on the railing.
Those, they sure ought to be in front of the rec department on New Hampshire Avenue.
We haven't put them there. I mean, that's, that's the...
There are some occasions.
Yeah, I was waiting for Councilmember Schultz to speak up for Ward Six.
Well, I'm just thinking, do we have a statutory committee to whom we can delegate?
I know.
Yeah. Because there are so many good ideas here in some lousy ones that...
All of mine are good and all of yours are not.
That, I mean, frankly, I'm pretty ignorant of signage in terms of the technology and stuff like that.
You could have stopped, ooh, the facade that I've...
Advisory, you can do the facade.
Their specific charge, I think, is, is fairly limited, but I guess you can...
We can change the charge.
I will say, I don't think we have to have consensus. We just need four votes for what we're gonna do.
Correct.
And, and those four votes would need to come in a, something, in a work session.
Yes. Wait till Colleen comes back.
I'd do anything to get rid of the banners. I'd vote for the wooden sign.
Exactly.
I, I think we've had, we've aired some of the issues, we've aired our opinions. I think it's now up to us to lobby each other and come up with the four votes and I'll put it on the agenda when there's four votes.
Was that E R R E D aired or was it A I R E D?
We aired the issues, that's good.
Yes, which is only appropriate when coming back after a long absence.
Yes.
So, let's, let's lobby ourselves and with that, and with that will it turn.
So we decided not to decide?
Well, we'll have to decide at a, at a time other than a work session.